Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council. Mayor Teresa Tomlin. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Evelyn Turner Pew, Mayor Protem, and District 4. Mike Baker, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council.
Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the October 30th meeting of the Columbus City Council. Today is a work session. We're also going to do a little bit of business. It's a hybrid meeting, but after we get the business done, we're going to have the opportunity to delve into some issues a little bit deeper than we normally do. Some things that are maybe coming down the pike, and council just wants some information on before we get into the throes of things, so you'll have the opportunity to learn about that as well. So, we really enjoy these work sessions, and hopefully you do too. A lot of good information today. As you all know, in our country, we've had a rough couple of weeks, a rough couple of days for certain, and we always start out our meetings with an invocation, as you know, to get our hearts and minds in the right place. And today, we have Associate Pastor Bob Hawkins with Cascade Hills Baptist Church. I'm going to ask him to come forward, and sir, also, if we could sort of incorporate some thoughts about our friends in Pittsburgh, our fellow brothers and sisters up there who are hurting, and today will be the first day that some of them are laid to rest. And so, I thank you for your time here this morning.
Well, we're glad to do it. Let's pray together. Father, we thank you so much for the new day. We thank you, Father, for the leadership that we have here in this place. I thank you for our mayor. I thank you for her team. I thank you for our city council members. And Lord, we thank you for the great city that we live in here. We thank you for those who keep us safe, all of our first responders. Lord, we thank you for all of our churches and all of our leaders. And Lord, we especially thank you for the great nation in which we live. We pray your favor upon our federal leaders, and, Lord, we pray they would make wise decisions on behalf of the nation, especially our young people. Lord, we also pray your blessings upon our state leaders. We pray your favor upon each one. Help them to make wise decisions, Lord, on behalf of their state and upon especially our young people. Lord, we thank you for our fellow citizens up there in Pittsburgh. Lord, what a tragedy that was. And we pray for them now as they're laid to rest. We pray for their families. And I pray, Lord, this morning, as we lift them up to you, that they can sense our concern for them, and they realize that their fellow citizens are lifting them up and caring for them. And, Lord, we never forget our men and women in the military. We pray for them wherever they are today, is there a way keeping us safe? So, Lord, again, we pray your favor upon our great nation. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pastor Hawkins, thank you so much, and we do send our prayers to those in Pittsburgh. And I think it's a good opportunity for us to realize that we have folks of many different faiths here in this community. We know because we invite folks from all walks, all faith traditions here, to bring our invocations. And so, maybe this is an opportunity for us to reach out to those who do not participate in our particular congregations, but are our fellow brothers and sisters in this community. And so, to those in synagogue, to those who worship in the Muslim faith, we have folks here. We've had people from the Buddhist faith tradition here before. Just know that we are a broad fabric of people from all different cultures and all different nations, and we've chosen to live together in Columbus, Georgia. So, peace be to you, and many blessings and thoughts to those who are in Pittsburgh today going through that tragedy. We have hope with us next. We have the next generation, those who we go through difficult times, but we know we're making things better for young folks like those who are with us today from Calvary Christian School. They're so ready to help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to ask them to come forward at this time and stand in front of the clerk's table. Tiaja's going to have a microphone for you, and as they assemble, if you all would stand and prepare for them to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. I knew you all were ready to do a great job. Let's get some introductions. If you would, just tell us your name and how old you are.
My name is Athens Burleson, and I'm almost 10 years old.
My name's Alexander Webster, and I'm 8.
My name is Saint Valentine, and I'm 9.
My name is Landon Carstens, and I'm 9.
My name is Luke Taylor, and I'm 9.
My name is Kaylee Carter, and I'm 9.
My name is Madeline Gaps, and I'm 9.
My name is Kylie Dawes, and I'm 9.
My name is Lauren Floyd, and I'm 9.
Excellent, and I think you've got some teachers with you today and some family members. If you're not already standing up and you're with these wonderful young folks from Calvary Christian, please stand up and let us recognize you. I think we had a special request. If you guys would turn around and face the audience. We've got a few parents want to get a nice picture, so y'all kind of scooch in a little bit, get close, so they can get y'all in one frame. All right. Well, thank you all very much. Great, great job, and we hope you'll come back and help us again. Have a great day at school. All right. We've got minutes to approve from our October 23rd council meeting. We've distributed these, and are there any edits or corrections that anyone saw? Oh, okay. We'll postpone that, actually. I'm sorry, I didn't do a head count, but we can do that at any time. And so, we're going to probably, how about this, Mr. City Attorney? Why don't we go straight into the city manager's agenda, let him make a presentation or two? Maybe we'll have a few folks join us in a moment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First on my agenda, I have a Clerk of Council office update. I've got the intern from my office, Lieutenant Colonel Lauren Christian, here, and also Lindsay Glisten, who is Deputy Clerk of Council. And, Madam Mayor, while this is on my agenda, it's a matter that has been dealt with by city council members and a council committee. And so, I would yield to Counselor Baker or some other counselor to see if they want to make some comments before Mr. Christian and Ms. Glisten come forward to the mic. And so, I'll yield to either Counselor Baker or any other member of council.
Okay. We've got Counselor Baker.
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, yes, Counselor Allen, Counselor Pew, Mayor Protem, myself, for the subcommittee that was working on this particular issue in the Clerk's office, and we've been working on it quite some time. And we've brought to bear really a lot of resources to help us get things moving in the right direction. We have, of course, Lieutenant Colonel Christian, who's been a great help. We have Mr. Doug Rollo from Georgia Archives, who's with us today. They work with local governments to help with document management and things like that on a volunteer basis, no cost to the taxpayers. Our internal auditor, Ms. Barfield, has been a great help. Of course, Ms. Glisten, and the city manager has made staff available with IT and things like that for some other issues we've had to address. So, it's been a really comprehensive effort, and I know they'll move through the update as quickly as they can, but there's some information there I think council needs, and I'll turn it over to them. There will be a personnel piece to this that will come back in executive session, probably at the next council meeting, an update on that, but we'll get to that later. But I'll turn it over to Ms. Glisten and Lieutenant Colonel.
Good morning. This morning, Lieutenant Colonel Lawrence Christian and I will be giving a status update on the Clerk of Council Audit Action Plan. Like Counselor Baker said, we have Mr. Doug Rollo here with us. Yes, there he is. He's with the Georgia Archives. He is actually the Assistant Director of Records Management for Local Government. He was kind enough to cancel a conference in Mississippi to be here with us today in case council has any questions. He has also visited our office back on August 20th. He came in, he looked at our records, he looked at our systems we were trying to implement, and gave us a lot of good feedback. He also hosted us a couple of weeks ago in Gwinnett County, where we were able to go in and look at their records center, look at the software that they use, and get some information there. So, we thank him for being here today. On our agenda today, we're going to go over the different plans that the Clerk of Council's Office has implemented regarding contracts and agreements, minutes, municode, and training. We're also going to go over board management, and Lawrence is going to go over different software options that we've got some information on having to do with agenda and meeting management, boards management, as well as document management. Our first plan of action that we're going to go over is for contracts and agreements. About three months ago, we started addressing the backlog as addressed in the audit report. And what you'll see throughout the slides, as far as the action plan, you'll see green checkmarks. Those are things we're really happy, we can say they are complete. There are items that we are currently working on, and we're going to continue to work on. The first one, we've reviewed every resolution from 2018 to current. To give you an idea of what that is, we went through over 4,700 resolutions, individually identified which ones council was approving an agreement with. We made a notation of each one to help us get started through the process. Currently, we're working on identifying all the current and expired contracts. And during this, we're going through, we're identifying the different categories. We've separated them in four different categories based off, you know, what the retention schedule would be. For general contracts, lease agreements, and grant agreements, they're kept seven years after they have expired. For capital improvement projects, they're kept 11 years after the project has been completed. So, you may have 40 agreements to go with one particular project. Whether they expire within a year, that does not matter. We have to keep them 11 years after the entire project has been completed. We have also created a process. Within the process, we had to make room to store the files. I don't know, there's been several of you that's come up to the Clerk's office within the past three months and before. We were practically sitting on top of boxes. We had so many documents. They go all the way back to the 1800s, actually. We had to make room for this new filing system, or there was no way for us to move forward. We did that, and we've also created a database. This database, pretty much, it's a spreadsheet. It tells you what we have in-house, what's active, what's expired, what the storage date is, so it'll roll over to go into storage so we can keep getting them in, and then also what the destruction date is. We've also created a checklist. This is something I came up with to help our staff identify the different categories. We've separated them into four, like I said. We have general contracts, lease agreements, grant agreements, and then capital improvement projects. In doing this, I was hoping that it would help the staff, because every contract is different. Every one of them looks different. Luckily, finance, they're pretty standard. They can get right to the information on the cover sheet. The other ones, not so much. They have to do a lot of digging. On the spreadsheet, it gives information on what the retention schedule is, so there's never any question, excuse me. And also, as they go through the process, the clerk has to sign off, whether it's the clerk or the deputy clerk, verifying that all signatures are present and that the document is ready to be filed. You can also see which staff member handled that document throughout the process, hoping to hold, you know, your staff accountable if there ever is an issue. We have also, excuse me, we're also currently working on printing and filing contracts. We've gone through the annual contract database that the finance department has. They've given us access to that, which has helped us tremendously. We're going through, we're printing them, attaching our checklist, and we're filing them. Also, with the help of the city manager and his deputy city managers, we are going to be working with the different departments in case there are any gaps. Based off the resolutions that we went through, we'll know what we still are missing. We want to make sure that we are in compliance, and we can pull any document you need. Most of the time, it's the city attorney's office. You know, they have issues come up, they want that document, and so, I'll get a phone call from Lucy. It's always Lucy. But I want to be able to grab it. I want to be able to get my hands on it and be able to provide her the information that she needs, and the city manager and deputy city manager's going to help us do that. Also, we want to work with the departments to come up with a general process to make sure that our office gets a fully executed copy. Not that a copy's being made once the clerk tests, because most of the time, your vendor has not signed it yet, so it's not a binding document. You don't have all the signatures, so really, it serves no purpose. So, we're going to be working with them on that. To address the minute backlog, we have reviewed all the council minutes from 1996 to 2018. In doing this, we had to go through ECAP, Doc Depot, physically dig through agenda folders. Tamika was a great help in that, and we worked really, really hard to go through, see if there are any gaps, identify, you know, what we needed to do going forward. In doing that, when Mr. Rollo came to visit us on August 20th, he explained to us that we could use what's called a statement of fact. The statement of fact can be attached to the minutes or to that binder for a year, and you'll hear me say binder quite a few times. We have binders within our vault for every single year. We have them for our resolutions, our ordinances, and our minutes. We want to make sure that those minutes are in there, because minutes are a permanent record and are required to be kept. He told us that we could use a statement of fact. It's pretty much just saying, here are the minutes that we have. They might not have been the minutes that were approved, but we have some form of minutes. We are covering ourselves going forward in case there were any questions. Also, the statement of fact, it outlines that minutes, in their current condition, they could be signed, unsigned, draft quality, or just a working copy. There's various stages of it. Within all those years, from 96 to 2018, there are only 15 sets of minutes that we cannot locate, and we are going to be working on those going forward. Also, something that was addressed in the audit was the minute procedures. The summary minutes are required by law to be completed and made available for public review within two business days after a meeting has adjourned. That would be, we have our meeting on Tuesday. By Thursday, they need to be completed, and they need to be put online. We are currently, let me just say, we are, as of right now, we are in compliance with all of these. Also, they discussed in the audit report, making the recommendation, minutes should be done in summary format. I completely agree with this. You know, we have very, very long council meetings. If I sit there a whole day and type all the conversation, you might get them in two weeks. You know, it's a lot that goes into it. So, we're doing that now. We're making sure we get all of the information required, which is your vote, any kind of official action taken, and also, if a counselor says, for the record, I make sure to include that in the minutes. Also, going along with the open meetings and records laws, minutes are required to be listed at the very next meeting for approval. We are also doing that now. As you know, the minutes are listed on the mayor's agenda, and they are ready to go by the next meeting. Also, in the action plan that the internal auditors provided, they made the suggestion of follow-up and confirmation that the documents have been put in the official minute books, the binders. Currently, what I'm doing, I complete the minutes within two days, so by that Thursday, as everyone knows, I'm all in your inbox for emails. I have your summary minutes. I have the minutes ready to go for you to review for the next meeting. And also, I make sure to let you know, the minutes have been printed, signed, and placed in the binder. For municode. Municode is what we use to codify our ordinances. Every time an ordinance is approved, changing the UDO, changing anything, any kind of code section within our ordinances, we must send that to municode. They update the website, and they also provide for us what's called a supplement. The supplement is your physical pages that you get, but it also keeps track of all the changes that have been made within our city government. We worked really hard to get with them, look at the different options and capabilities that they had. Currently, they're sending us updates quarterly, so we get four a year. There are, there's options to do it more, but at a higher cost. And currently, we always go over in our budget for municode every single year, and you'll see in your packets that I provided an attachment that gives you information as far as our actual expenditures and our adopted budget, I believe, from FY '16 to year-to-date for FY '19. We also made sure that we reduced the unnecessary copies of the supplements. This doesn't really change our cost at all. They charge us per page. So, if the UDO comes through, or, excuse me, an ordinance comes through changing the UDO and say there's three pages, that it changes, we have to pay, it's $23 and some change, for each page that's changed. If there's graphs, images, tables, that's an extra $10 on top of that. You think it's not much, but I actually have an invoice on my desk for over $2,700 right now, and that's just one. We have also looked at possibly incorporating software that would help us with making sure that the ordinance get to municode in a timely manner, and our ordinances are always up to date. This is very important for inspections and codes, planning, you know, they refer citizens to the code when they come with questions. So, we have to make sure that it's ready to go. There is software that is available that I could sit right here, you could approve it, and in one click, I can send it straight to them. No extra paper, no trying to remember it. It's done. And Lawrence took a huge role in checking with everyone to see if that was available. We are also working to establish procedures to make sure that these things are sent. In the meantime, I, Lawrence, was kind enough to show me around Task Manager and Outlook. If you've never used it, it's the most amazing thing that was ever made, and I plan on using it for the rest of my life. There's so many things in my task box, it's a little ridiculous, but I'm going to use it to assign tasks to our staff. So, I can put the ordinance number and let, Brittany usually sends them, she's our secretary, I can let her know in that Task Manager, you need to send ordinance number 18-45. It needs to be sent to municode. She'll let me know that she started it, and when it's complete and it's gone to municode, she can let me know that it is complete, and we can make sure that it's being done. Also, we are going to review the historical information as far as cost, and also, that's what I provided you. Like I said, we go over every single year. It never fails, and you never know exactly how much it's going to cost. It's difficult to predict that. So, just to let you know, Mr. City Manager, we'll be talking to you come budget time. Just, you know, these are things that we have to do. Doesn't matter which department asks for the change, we have to foot the bill every single time. Training. Training has also been an issue in the Clerk's office, and it's something that we're working really hard to address. We, Lawrence and I, have both been working to establish a handbook for the Clerk's Office. There's never really been a handbook. It's, you come in, Tamika actually trained me on a lot of things, and she is still better opening the vault than I am. Don't let them close the vault and lock it, and Tamika not be there, we're in trouble. But this manual, it will serve for, you know, a training manual for new hires, temporary hires, and also, as a cross-reference for our existing employees. We're also going through the position descriptions. I decided to hold off on this one because we're making so many changes. The duties are going to change. I would hate to put in all this work to change them now, and then a couple of months go by, and then we're having to change them again. And there's other things that I really need them to focus on, so that is the reason this has not been done. That is completely my fault. I just figured that the contracts, minutes, those need to be our primary focus, and we've been doing that. But now that things are starting to slow down a little bit as the year comes to an end, they'll have time to do that. Also, cross-training of existing employees. Every time there has been a change made, discussed, anything in the office, I've made sure to sit down with our staff. We don't have a big staff. We have two, other than me right now, and I've made sure to sit down with them, let them know, this is what's going on. Do you think this will work for you? Do you have any suggestions? We sit down, we talk about it, and we may, you know, tweak it any kind of way. Just, we're trying it out. We've tried several things out. It might not work, but that's okay. We're still working through this together. Also, Lawrence and I have been working on a council handbook, excuse me. It can serve as a reference manual for new counselors, and, you know, there's issues that come up that you might not have done in 10 years. You know, we know it's happened here at the council meeting. Well, hold on. Wait, what are we supposed to do with this? This is going to help, hopefully, but it's going to help us too. We need to understand what it is that you do so that we can better serve you. The office as a whole is the administrative arm of the city council, and we want to make sure that we're doing that. The last item that I want to address is the board management. According to the charter and the city code of ordinances, the Clerk of Council's Office is responsible for managing the 42 boards, authorities, commissions, committees. There are 337 members within those boards. This is by far the most time-consuming task in our office, and I can personally say that because I do it every day, all day, and it is, it's huge. Anyone that sits down with me to go through what it takes to get one person that's appointed, get them through the system. We send the mayor's staff their information so they can be contacted to schedule their oath. I send the city attorney's staff information on the person coming off so they can complete the resolutions. There's so much information that we're having to put in and send and everything else, and I'll use Lawrence and Elizabeth, for instance. Both of them have sat down with me, and they were astonished. They're like, this, this is insane. And it really is. It's, to say it's cumbersome is an understatement. It can take me up to almost an hour to do maybe one or two appointments. That's if I have a biosketch. If I don't get a biosketch, I can't move forward at all. And I know council has received phone calls from citizens, people that you've appointed to boards, and they're like, well, I haven't got a phone call. Well, I've been calling them. If I was able to find a phone number, we actually had a gentleman on the Columbus Aquatics Commission. I remember that very clearly because I was so embarrassed because, well, how can you not get in touch with them? I'm like, but I can't, nobody will give me their information. I've called, you know, I can only do as much as I can, and I have no problem calling and hounding people at all. Pretty good at it. But if I'm, you know, a door slammed in my face, there's only so much that I can do. And actually, a staff member with Parks and Rec saw the gentleman around the pool and ran around the pool to go grabbing. Hold on, you need to call the Clerk of Council's Office. And he did, and we found out he did not even want to serve. So, you know, those are the issues, and that's why if I call you or text you, I'm like, hey, I need a phone number. I need a biosketch. These are the reasons why. We have reviewed the processes, and we've streamlined them as much as we possibly can. I may have been able to shave off minutes, but it's still, it's still a lot, and we really, really need to look at something in the future that can help us manage that because, you know, that's a lot of people, 337, and, you know, the different boards, they have different term limits, they have different restrictions. Some of them, you know, they're pretty much governed by the state. We have to know all of this and make sure that you do not drop the ball, because if you do, it can cause problems for other organizations, other CCG departments, and we really want to make sure that we are not contributing to any of that. So, with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Christian, and he's going to give you some information about software.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, counselors, Mr. City Manager. Thank you so much for allowing me to address you this morning. Now, now that we have this short briefing out of the way for the next 90 or so minutes, I'll go through a complete comparative analysis for all the software items. Just kidding, mine's a short part, three to five minutes. We summarize it concisely so you can understand really what we need to talk about. Current slide, the current slide in front, if you top-left, top-right, that is really just a visual depiction of the two software systems that are currently used by the CCG. Top-left is the E-CAP, Electronic Counsel Agenda Packet, top-right Doc Depot. Both of those software systems are what's termed as end-of-life. If you notice the top-left one there, Lotus Notes, that's going to be transitioned between the next 12 and 18 months, as once the city transitions full into Microsoft. The top-right Doc Depot, that is out of site license since 2014, so we have no way to update that. That is equate nicely, that is two dudes in a garage getting paid for something that is not updatable. We really need to come move forward on that one. The bottom items right there is your agenda and your minutes. That's really just allowing you to figure out how do we get these items, which are required by state law, out of public-facing software venue that allows the constituents to view them whenever they so choose. That, that allows us to be compliant with Georgia Statute 36. So, we kind of broke this down in three phases, three phases. Phase one, really, we need to talk about agenda and meeting management software. I think we've done a lot of research and a lot of work on that one. Phase two is really the enterprise content management software. That's how you manage the documents and resources. That's your agenda, that's your minutes, that's how people can access all the historical documents. And phase three, that's the board management that Lindsay discussed briefly earlier. And by far, that is, you know, she was being very kindly, that is the most cumbersome, laborious process, 28-step analog, six different types of operating systems I've ever seen, and really, but we have a way to streamline that one and reinvest that time back into the Clerk's office. So, phase one is really what we're talking about with it, with the software, different Attached, you'll see the criteria that we use. We have about, in total, I can tally it up for the different meetings and demonstrations we did, we have about 37-plus hours of research invested into the different types of software and the requirements and the criteria that we need for, to make a determination. And if you can kind of see, this is kind of what we boiled it down to, and we did an informal bid process with the purchasing department that allowed us to really codify these particular areas and get some really salient information back from the different firms. Definitely has to be a cloud-based, cloud-based service. That is, and you know, we talked with Forrest and his folks, that is the Azure Government Cloud, that's a DOD-compatible, stage five, or level-five certification. That means it's secure. Our, our information cannot be encroached upon. The unlimited users, that allows us to, across the entire CCG, to include, you will have usernames and passwords in order to access this software, and it's user-friendly, very user-friendly. The number of meetings, it allows us to do agendas for not just your council meeting, but all of the boards and committees and authorities. What that does is it standardizes and it streamlines and allows a level of feeding mechanism from the councils, the boards, and the authorities to you. It is one-stop shopping, in a sense. It allows the meetings, it also allows each one of those boards, authorities, and commissions to create their minutes in the same operating software system, and then immediately send it to Lindsay for inclusion into the next council meeting. So, it streamlines the process on multiple fronts. The workflow approval, once in a packet, is done within different, various departments of CCG, allows, goes right up to the department head for approval, to the deputy city manager, Mr. City Manager, allows for that approval, and it goes right onto the agenda. Again, very streamlined, and all of the software options allow for this process to be done. It allows for automatic roll call. You, every time you do a vote on any type of resolution ordinance, it captures that vote, immediately sends it over to the minutes. It is a online automated process. We have taken, the software has taken this to the next generation. And we can kind of keep going down, but for the most part, all the softwares are compliant with this, and they all help the city move to the next level. As you see right here, the only variance between the different softwares is really the price point. We range from $8,000 to $48,000. There are minute additions to each one of the software, but for the most part, the bookends really are, are very, the ceiling and the floor, high and low, $8,000 to $48,000. Days of implementation vary from 90 to 120, but for the most part, with, speaking with some of these firms, you can have this software operational within the next 10 to 15 days. And the feedback will be immediate. The workflow is, is automatic, right from inception to completion. If you have any, for each one of the agenda and meeting management software, if things are pulled out of sequence, it is simply now a click of a mouse click versus she having to recreate the entire process and drag and drop on a Microsoft Word, email process. This absolutely brings us in the 21st century and modernizes the system of agenda and meeting So, for the next slide, kind of where we've done, this is what I would call the bookends. Phase one and phase three, I think, can be handled with one software recommendation. And this, I make this one after reviewing all of the informal bids, conducting demonstrations, and I like, I will go with, my recommendation would be the lowest bidder, municode, for a variety of reasons. One, they already handle our codification software services. Two, name recognition. They are, it's a seamless integration, integration. It allows us to move forward immediately with instantaneous adaptation. Again, it's cloud-based, so we just, we dial into that cloud, that service. Also, at a later date, if you look at phase three, that is the board management. There, municode has a module that will be coming out in the next several months, and that particular price point is only $2,500. So, for one decision, you can have, handle two major problems within the Clerk's office and continue moving forward. And that price point stays pretty constant over the next four years. There was a 5% increase on year five, and then that stays constant for four years after that one. The other software services, that if you want to go back one slide, you can see, all of those have a variance of 7% to 18% increases either two years at a three-year mark. So, again, it, for me, it was a no-brainer. And you must, you're probably asking yourself, "How can one software company be so much lower than the rest of them?" And here's the, here's the issue with that one. And they've identified this one as a, as a really good best, best practice. Their software is standardized for every municipality across the United States. The municipalities change some of their tactics, techniques, procedures to adopt to this software system. It is not a difficult thing to do, it's very easy, especially when we're not modernized where we're currently at right now. So, it's very easiest to tie into this particular software suite and, and fall in line with it. All software updates are pushed uniformly across the United States, so that way it's done at the same time. There is not specific code written to each municipality, so it's very easy. That's particular, why this particular software is my recommendation to the city council this And the second phase, which, if you see right there, that is the enterprise content management. That was really the big one. If you can see, if you remember Doc Depot, we talked about that one. My equation for Doc Depot is this one. If you're looking, if you take a soda straw and you look into a bowl full of marbles, the only thing you're going to see is some color. You're not going to see the marbles, and that's really how I equate Doc Depot. It is an antiquated system, you can't manipulate it, you can't look at it the way you need to do it these days. I have, personally have, I've got, on my computer in the office, I've got searches, the same words exactly, because I copied them, and I've got results three different times, three different results in three different times. The system is, it needs to be replaced. But I think at this juncture, it's too premature, we need to conduct a formal RFP process because there are so many different variances. We need to identify what it is we need as, as a city and present those forward in a comprehensive RFP process. So, that's why that particular phase is not highlighted at this point. So, my recommendation is phase one and phase three complete, but phase two, moving forward in the RFP process at a later date. We can't ignore it because that software system two is failing. So, but, pending any questions, that's all I have.
Hold on a second, yes, we do, we have Counselor Davis.
The, do you back up a couple slides, back to the cost? Just want to go, is that an annual cost or is that a one-time cost?
That's an annual cost for each one of those, that is different. Initial year cost for each one of those software services.
And then you said in year three, there's going to be a start of, whether it's a maintenance or licensing or what, update costs?
They have an annual increased cost for seven of the eight firms, you charge a, an increased cost at year three to four. The one software that I'm recommending, municode, it is standardized for four years, and then it's an annual 5% increase for every, on the fifth year, and then it gets standardized for four more years.
Are they all similar or are they all different?
As far as what, sir?
Cost, maintenance cost, updates, licensing fees.
All different, they all have different licensing fees, they all have different percentage points based off of their particular operating system.
Well, I'd be curious to see that in, in writing.
I didn't print that out because each one of the informal bids was averaged between 56 to 61 pages, and I chose not to waste a lot of paper. I can come see.
Well, I don't know if you could pick out the most pertinent parts of it.
In the informal bid process, we don't have the comprehensive RFP data points that are normally done. So, it was limited, but during the research, we did find some key points that presented there. Everything we need for the city was outlined right here. That's really what we're, what we're trying to accomplish.
Well, that's fine, I'm talking about cost.
Cost, yes.
I'm talking about cost and reoccurring cost.
Yes.
Future cost.
Yes.
And the reason I'm asking is because we just went through some of the software implementation not long ago, and I think a lot of us were surprised by some of the current, ongoing costs, implementation costs. I mean, I would ask that question, is there any cost to implement it, or what, what are the terms going to be? Is that?
For the recommendation for the, for the municode, there is no implementation cost whatsoever. There is no, or, sorry, there is no in-person training. All the training is conducted online. But because of the, the design of the software, and we have done this for the demonstrations for almost all of them, municode is by far the easiest. It is the most intuitive, it is, I could get on there right now and with just a little bit of training, figure out how to manipulate that software. The high-end software, I mean, I will tell you, I equate it to a full-scale Cadillac, which it has all the bells and whistles that we don't need. We need a very solid, stable platform, and that's what the, the lower-priced models really provide us. And those are the ones that are going to keep us going on to the future. That's not something that's going to be five years and done. This is, you know, five years, 10 years, 15 years, and those price points remain constant with simple cost of, or cost increases every fifth year.
So, those increases will be consistent regardless of which company you go with?
Yeah, absolutely.
It's not going to be a situation where you pay a lot on the front end and then you pay little on the rear end, and, or you pay little on the front end and a lot on the rear end?
And, and the front end, when we get into the, the enterprise content management, which is the phase number two, that records document management software, that's what you're going to really find out, is you're going to pay a lot upfront, and then your annual cut fees after that one are much lower over time.
And just one more time, just clarify, so I'm on the same page with you. You're recommending the municipal corporation?
I am. For, for both phase one and phase three, that allows you to conduct your agenda and meeting management software, as well as when the, the module comes out within a few months, that board management will then also streamline, it will tie directly in with the municipal management because it's the same corporation. So, you could have codification, agenda meeting management, and board management, all from the same company, all tying in with each other. It's all on the same public-facing websites, and it's updated all the time.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we have Counselor, Counselor Thomas.
Colonel, we-
Hold on a minute, Counselor Thomas, for some reason you didn't light up there. There you go.
Colonel, we, we currently use municode, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So, this $8,000 would be on top of our current cost for that service, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And then I also have a question, back to Ms. Glisson's presentation. I guess it's probably for Mr. Rollo. The, you, you talked about the statement of facts that you put on these minutes and so forth. How many of those did we have? Did we have a lot?
Counselor Thomas, what we decided to do with there being so many minutes is, we worked with the city attorney, and he provided us a draft, if you will, of the statement of fact that we could include on the minute binder, so it's for that whole year. Some of them are signed, some of them are not signed, we're not sure unless we went through every single word and watched every single video or listened to every single audio recording there is. That is not, that's not feasible at all. So, we attached them to the binders, it has the very, the beginning meeting, the very first meeting for that year, and then the very last meeting for that year listed in there, and it, you know, just states that these minutes are present in this, you know, they're attached herein for the record, but pretty much it's stating that though they're in there, it might not have been what was approved, whenever it was listed. So, it's, it's pretty much acknowledging that, you know, the different conditions that the minutes are in, but it's covering the city just that we've addressed it. We've acknowledged that there was an issue, and we have provided as much information as we can.
And I guess my question for Mr. Rollo is, how does this compare with other municipalities that you are familiar with? The number of, of those minutes that are not complete, or we need a statement of fact, or, I'm just curious.
Unfortunately, it, there are a significant number here, you know, for the consolidated government of Columbus. However, it's not the worst one we've seen.
Oh.
We had one, one municipality that had 30 years' worth of minutes that were unsigned and not completed. So, it's, it's, it's an impossible task to go back and recreate those minutes because people have changed, signatures have changed, the people that authorize, you know, you know, mayors have changed, so there's no way to collect all the signatures and make them into the final work product.
And from here going forward, do you, or, Ms. Glisson, anticipate a continued problem with this, or is this something that should be?
No, we do not. We feel that it's going to be a complete packet, especially with the summary minutes, that it's, it's a lot easier and faster to get out, and the turnaround time is a lot more achievable and then, and the final product is more sustainable.
And it meets all of the requirements of the state law?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have Counselor Baker.
Counselor, my dear, give me a brief touch on the retention schedule. I believe, Mr. City Attorney, we adopted the state retention schedule, but if you would address the importance of that and how we need to clean up, just because something's old doesn't mean it's historic, some of that stuff we need to get.
That is, that is correct. The retention schedule is established by the Chancellors Committee, Records Management Committee, which, four years ago, the, the supervision of the retention schedules was transferred from the Secretary of State's office to the Board of Regents' office, especially with the Chancellor. And so, we have, in, in the past, taken a look at the retention schedules, making sure that they are appropriate for, you know, you know, today's government, and, you know, taking a look at, making sure we're not keeping any records that we're having to keep any longer than necessary, but keeping them as long as they're an asset to the municipal governments.
Because we're held, as I understand, we're held liable for either the retention schedule or how long we have the document, whichever's longer.
Well, but the, the rule is, is if you have the records, you must produce them. And, you know, as we know, Georgia is an open records state. And so, the question that I usually start quite a few of my presentations off is, how long should you keep your personal income tax records? The correct answer is three years. But if you have them longer, the IRS could audit you for three years using their records, and then they can take your records and audit you as far back as you have records. I hope that answers your question.
Save this conversation for, save this conversation for another day.
Well, my sister-in-law is a CPA as well, as well as a senior IRS auditor, so.
But thank you, I think that was my question. And I think, Counselor Davis, you and I talk a lot about cost-benefit of various software and things. One of the issues here, the cost-benefit, not necessarily dollars, but, but man-hours, if these software issues would free up man-hours so they can be re- If these software issues would free up man-hours so they can be reallocated among the office so nothing else gets behind, so all of the various things they do can stay on task, that's a big, that's a big, big piece of this. And until they get, y'all get your hands around this, you know, whatever you do, don't create any more boards or commissions or committees. Because the man-hours that go into it probably aren't worth the benefits you're going to get out of them. Wait until we get, you know, you get your, your arms around this thing. Thank you.
If I may, one of the things, I think I fully understand your question now, and if you really, I think you really asked for other hidden costs later on down the line that we really don't identify right now. And that was one of the key questions we had for each one of the software companies. What are we expecting? What are we going to see in three, five, ten, fifteen years? And that's kind of why they gave us their graduated pricing plan over the time and space. What you saw before you was the initial year cost pricing. That will go down for almost all of them except municode. They have one price. It is consistent for four years. On the fifth year is a small percentage increase, then that is consistent for four years. Everybody else, two to three years, there's a cost increase every two to three years. There are no hidden costs that we were aware of. Everything was presented to you in this form today.
All right. We have Counselor Thomas.
Colonel, I have one other question about the municode, the board management software. One of my frustrations has been when we, when we have someone who is coming off a board whose term is up, and we don't know it until after that term is already up. Will this software address that concern and that problem so that, I had no idea that we were talking about this number of boards and number of people, so I, I'm glad you brought that out. But it's frustrating to see that so-and-so's term ended two months ago, and we're just now being asked to appoint somebody.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. It will address it on two different fronts. One, once you do the data, if you get the board's management software suite that comes along with municode at a later date, the data entry will have to go in for all the three hundred and thirty-seven candidates, and a quick identification of what each board is, term limits, and when they were bored. After that, everything is automatic because you set the board limits. Because it's the same company, and any board module will do this one, it feeds into the agenda packet creation. So it will automatically let you know at whatever council meeting you've come before that this particular member of the board, his term is expiring, you need to do another one. And you set that time limit. If you want it sixty days out, ninety days out, hundred and twenty days out, it will automatically feed the agenda.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And to tag on something that you brought up and that Counselor Baker alluded to, and perhaps this is a referral to the city attorney, the city manager, but I think council would be well-served by a very thorough review of all of the commissions and boards and authorities. I do think there are some that have either significantly evolved over time, that their mission needs to be rethought, or perhaps there's some that need to be dissolved. And that, one of the reasons we have such difficulty, right, I mean, some of these have been around for a couple decades now, and, and some of the reasons we have high turnover or whatever is because they get in there and there's really not, they don't, they're not doing what they used to do back in 1981, because that thing's just not really done by this government anymore. So, you know, Mr. City Manager, you may have some thoughts on who that should be assigned to, but boy, that would be a great work session item for the next time around, or maybe an email for council to review these boards and commissions and what they do.
Yes, and as you say that, Madam Mayor, if we can continue to get interns the quality of what we have in Lieutenant Colonel Lawrence Christian, that would be a great project for a couple of interns to take that on and work with city council and come and present to city council at some point in the future.
Thank you.
I'd like just this, with more than two boards.
With their missions. It would be eye-opening. Yep. Okay, great. Thank you all.
Well, and I have just a couple of comments regarding this, and, but first, want to really thank the three people standing here today for all of their great work, and I think Deputy Clerk Glisten and great presentation, information, and to Lieutenant Colonel and to our archivists, great work, and I learned something today about my tax returns. But, but just a question, just for the record, so did you consult with our IT director, Forrest Tolle?
I did.
And I'd be interested in his comments regarding your recommendation with municode. And I know that Counselor Davis just asked some questions about other vendors, but, you know, municode, they've been around for a long time, and others come and go and become obsolete, but they've stood the test of time, and they've got something canned for municipalities across the country where they can all be alike. But I'd be interested in, Mr. Tolle, your comments on the recommendation regarding this software.
IT worked real closely with the clerk's office and Lawrence Christian. And basically, what we do is give the overview of the requirements that we think's necessary to run a secure system. And with that in mind, we do fully support the conclusion that Lawrence has come up with, with the clerk's office in this software. And I've been speaking to him as recent as yesterday. We went over the presentation and everything, and we're in agreement with the recommendations of the clerk's office.
Okay. Thank you. And, and so with that, Madam Mayor and council, though I have not been involved with them in this process, will be guided by your direction regarding the software. We think that, I think at least, that we, what has been described and presented is where we need to be in terms of best practices and state-of-the-art, the cutting edge, moving in the right direction, and so we're ready when you are.
Why don't you, unless there's an objection from counselors, why don't you put it on your agenda as a purchase item for the next business meeting? It'll be an E cap with all the supporting documentation, and if council has questions or objections, they can certainly make them.
Sure.
Or vote against it, you know, or vote for it if, if they're ready to move on it.
Sure. Well, you know, I, yeah, and we'll certainly do that, but I can tell you, if it's the municode that you're looking for, and it's the $8,000, we'll, we'll take it from contingency. So that would be the funding source for $8,000.
And we've got a presentation on our reserve coming up in just a few minutes.
But this would not come from reserve, it'd come from contingency.
Oh, contingency, I'm sorry. I just misheard you. Thank you. Wonderful.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking $10,500, but yeah, contingency.
Great, thank you. Well, thank you all. I think you've heard how incredibly helpful you have been. We're so appreciative of all the various resources from the state and, and Clerks Association, from all of you all. Thank you. And Lindsay, thank you for the great effort, and to council who stepped up and been very, very involved in this. So we're getting there.
And Madam Mayor, I will say that for Lieutenant Colonel Lawrence Christian, his TAM is coming to an end very soon. I think it's at the end of October, October 31st, but I think he's going to stretch it a couple of weeks into mid-November, but we'll probably thank him at, in the next couple of weeks. But I really want to thank him for all that he's done, not just with this project, but he has done work that we could not pay for beyond this project that, and things that he's still working on that has, is making the city a better city, so. I want, yes, army's wrong. I want to thank him.
Thank you. Well, we're so grateful to have had you for this time, and, and we're going to switch back over to our other agenda, but this was a great way to kick off our work session because it just shows how productive we are when we do have challenges and issues inevitably that come up. So thank you again, and thank you for our partners. We're so glad to have you here with us today. Thank you, sir. Counselor, did you have something to this point? Okay, sorry, yes.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to echo the comments regarding Colonel Lawrence. He was invaluable to our little group that met trying to go through this. And Lindsay, you did a great job this morning. Very good. And to Archivist Rollo, I know you spent a lot of man-hours with us on this. You made at least two trips down here, and I thank you personally for that. And I learned a lot sitting in the meetings with him, talking through some of the clerical actions that we need to take. But I wanted to thank all three of you, and to Elizabeth Barfield too, who were just invaluable in this process. And on behalf of Mayor Proton, who's not here, I think she would echo those comments as well. Thank you very much.
We have Counselor Barnes.
I want to jump on a bandwagon and thank Counselor Allen, Counselor Baker, the mayor Proton, the archivist, and thank you for, make sure I check my, my IRS as well. Lindsay, for doing a marvelous job. And I would be remiss if I didn't continue saying, Lindsay, for all of this transition, you've done a marvelous job, all that it's going through. And Tamika, I know you were tasked with doing some things, areas that you were not even involved in, but you stepped up to the plate and you filled in. I want to thank you. You two have done a marvelous job, and it's, and Lindsay, that presentation was off the chain. But Tamika, thank you so much for filling in the gap in this transition and all the things that you, that you've done.
All right. And we have Counselor Woodson.
I just want to echo Counselor Pomp's comments. I think he read my mind when we were doing that. But I also want to include all the staffs, all the volunteers that also helped because it's not a one-man show, as we can see today in the presentation, the colonel, the archive, Tamika knows. It took a village to try to get this back on the right path. And city manager, I know this isn't part of your daily duties, but I appreciate you jumping in, giving guidance, and ensuring that everything is going in the same way. And especially to my colleagues, they have other jobs, they have other commitments, and they took the time to ensure that this office is in the order that it should be. So I think, I want personally to say thank you to each and every one of you, and for the people of District Seven who would appreciate it when they're looking for documents and wanting to be on board. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all again. All right, we're going to turn it over to the city manager, excuse me, the city attorney. We have several items on the city attorney's agenda, so Mr. Fay.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. We'll run through these fairly quickly. The first zoning item that's up is property at 7277 Saul Court. We had an amendment last week for a 25-foot buffer. I would like to propose to you that you adopt a new amendment related to a 50-foot buffer that's already shown on a recorded plat. Our planning department and engineers did some more research and found the 50-foot buffer north of the creek that borders this property, and that should be in your book and on E cap. But if we could get a motion to adopt the 50-foot buffer that's already on record, the developer will have to maintain that and notify his purchasers of that buffer as well.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Counselor Allen.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I just wanted to, without trying to repeat what, what the city attorney just said, but since last week, we did find that there was a 50-foot buffer along the same border. My intention was not to reduce that buffer in size, but to actually keep it intact. So I'm glad we were able to discover this and keep it moving forward, add it as a provision to the, condition to the rezoning. Thank you.
All right. All right. With that, the item is cued for your vote. You may vote electronically.
Are we voting on the amendment? Just the amendment first.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I saw amendment and I wasn't thinking. So this is further amended to add the 50-foot buffer. So we're going to do an oral vote on the amendment of the 50-foot buffer. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, now to the additionally amended ordinance. Did we have any comment on that? Counselor Allen, did you have anything further? Okay. All right. And seeing that there's nothing on that, now we can vote electronically on this item. And somehow, it's not, let's see, redouble down. Counselor Davis, somehow it's not picking you up? Oh, you're, who's Ms.?
She's the one.
Oh, okay, yeah. All right, there we go. We only had five, so, all right, we've got it now. Thank you all.
All right. That passes as amended at the table today. Next item up is the Veterans Parkway, Gray Rock Road intersection zoning to general commercial is ready for adoption.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and second for adoption. Is there any discussion? Okay, you may record your votes electronically. And it does pass.
Okay. Mr. Myers, thank you for being here. That's passed. Mayor, next item is the discussion of courthouse renovation, planning, South Commons improvements. This was, would be a formal request to the Columbus Building Authority to issue lease revenue bonds in maximum principal amount of $7 million. It's ready for action unless there's further discussion.
We've got a motion and second for approval. Is there any further discussion on this item? All right, see none. You may record your votes electronically. And it does pass.
Okay, great. The last item, Mayor, if we could just delay, Counselor Huff wanted to read that. If he does get here, he was delayed.
Sure.
We'll read it later.
Yeah, just remind me.
If not, we can vote on it just at the end of the meeting.
Okay. If you'll just, I'll make a note, but in case I, my mind wanders on some other item, just, just help me remember.
That's all.
Counselor Davis, did you have some, thank you. Counselor Davis?
Yeah, ma'am, I just wanted to add to, just, I think it's, it's important, we had a lot of conversation on the, on the matter of the bond and some of the things that we needed to do, and it's my understanding, I was told, there were a lot of calls being made as to how this council, the direction of this council was going to go in updating and doing the necessary improvements to, to keep softball here in Columbus and possibly get a future bid for the Olympics. I just have to believe there was a Plan B and a Plan C, that if we didn't make this decision, they were going somewhere else.
Wow.
And it was all about what this council was willing to do. So I think that's important to say with this decision.
Wow. Well, thank you for that. That, I think it's a great investment. I think we all feel that way, so. All right, good. Well, now we're back to updates and presentations. We'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. I've got an update for the Columbus Convention and Visitors Bureau. We try and bring them quarterly and have them provide an update to you, the mayor and council, and to the public. And so I've got the president and CEO, Mr. Peter Bowden.
Good morning. How's everyone just today? It's great to be back in front of you all to bring our latest update, and we appreciate city manager for including us at the work session. Tourism is big business here in Columbus, and I'd like you to take a look at this for just a moment.
In 2018, 1.9 million visitors experienced Columbus, Georgia, spending $352 million while supporting 4,383 local jobs. The economic impact of visitor spending created $124 million in estimated payroll and $22.2 million tax revenue from sales and lodging. Tourism saved locals $540 in taxes per household. For every $1 visit Columbus spends on marketing, there's a $24.37 separate turn on that investment. Tourism spending just makes sense.
So again, tourism is big business for Columbus, and when we look at, look at it and break it down, it's about the economic impact, it's about the jobs, household savings, that return on investment, and it all adds up and it impacts business and service industries throughout the city. I want to take a little deeper dive and look at our numbers. We continue to see continued growth with significant visitation. We, this is for fiscal '18. We, this is for fiscal '18, we saw 1.9 million visitors here in Columbus. They spent $352 million during their time here, and this is new money in our city, which is significant. There's a difference between this spending, or recirculating money in the economy, which most of us do when we hire someone, or advertise, or go to the grocery store, that sort of thing, versus new money that visitors bring and leave and inject into the business community. That in turn supported over 4,300 jobs in the hospitality industry and generated $124 million of estimated payroll for those workers. Visitors generated $22.2 million in sales and lodging tax revenue for Columbus, Georgia, which created a $540 in tax savings for Columbus households. Without visitor spending, a way to look at this is, without visitor spending, government would have to find new ways to make up that difference in order to provide services for our citizens. So let's look at our fiscal year '18 and how destination marketing performed for our city. We exceeded goals in both meetings held and leads sent. Meetings held is, are the various events, meetings and so forth that took place throughout fiscal '18, generating $27.4 million here in Columbus. Leads sent, this is the process where we prospect and create new business for the city. This is potential business that we have submitted a proposal to and waiting on a decision. Again, we exceeded goal in this respect. Turn-definite bidding, turn-definite business, these are meetings that we have won and will host and occur, that will occur in Columbus at some point in the future. We are currently looking at calendar, booking calendars as far out as 2025 when it comes to new business here in the city. Turn-definite business are those meetings that are still, we're still in the running for, and we're waiting for the meeting planner to make that final decision. Again, you see in both instances that we exceeded the goal that we set for the team. Site visits. We converted 71% of the site visits that took place in Columbus last year into new business with an impact of $3.3 million. And then servicing. Servicing takes up almost the majority of our time, which is something that we excel at. Our customers tell us that this sets us apart, Columbus apart as a city when it comes to meetings and events taking place in this, throughout the city. And it's something that a lot of CVBs don't do. So whenever a customer steps forward and pats you on the back for what the team does, it makes us feel good. And again, we exceeded our goal by 125% in that regard. If we look at market segments, military unions, group leisure, or motor coach, and a local campaign we have called Bring Your Meeting Home, these strategies continue to work well for us. And again, the team is focused on the goal, include tracking those meetings and events that will happen in Columbus. And again, I can't sing enough praises for how hard they work in bringing and making a difference and exceeding their goals year after year. So let's go to the movies for a few minutes. Definitely a lot of buzz about film in Columbus. Last couple of months, we premiered two films still, and things don't stay fixed. And these were made in partnership with the Georgia Film Academy and Columbus State University's Film Program. So we want to dig a little deeper on how we're going to make film a new industry and what we're doing to attract more film to Columbus. First off, we've got to look at the big picture. In Georgia, film, the film industry is a $9.5 billion business. Last year in Georgia, 455 projects were made. These were both movies and television productions, which translates to the jobs. And this is the key, the linchpin in our discussion this morning. 92,000 Georgias currently working film, with 90% of that work being done in the Atlanta area and the remaining in Savannah. 10% is being done in Savannah. Columbus has faced its fair share of challenges in recruiting film. One of the primary obstacles is that the city is outside the production center that is approximately a 60-mile radius from ground zero in Atlanta. All production is in, being done in Atlanta. We are just simply too far away in securing a backlog of filmmaking in our city. But we have a plan. When I say that we're outside of that production zone, this adds expense to filmmakers working outside both Atlanta and Savannah. There's an added cost, there's a per diem that cover housing, food, and travel, et cetera. And the production facilities supporting film in Columbus are just now coming online, and we'll talk about that in just a moment. As I said a moment ago, there is a strategy, there is a public-private partnership that is being formed to make Columbus the third film hub in Georgia. It's made up Columbus State University and the Georgia Film Academy to create a substantial local workforce. The Columbus Film Commission promoted the city and its assets as a film destination, and Flat Rock Studio establishing critical infrastructure needed for film. As I said, we have been working in film for a number of years, and we were one of the first cities to receive camera-ready designation through the governor's office and the Georgia Film Office. Shelby Guest and our office put a team together to meet that criteria, and Joel Slocombe currently in our office is a point of contact for filmmakers and producers and scouts looking at Columbus for whatever their project might be. As a film commission, we've added marketing elements to the website, again, to position Columbus for film. Can't say enough about W.C. Bradley when they stepped forward and created Columbus's first soundstage, Flat Rock Studio. It is incredible facility. It's hosted the university's film program, and the facility is about 140,000 square feet with the ability to add yet another structure adjacent to the current building. Plus, there's an 80-acre backlot. This soundstage provides the beginning of the infrastructure needed to attract filmmakers, and we've had a number of producers and scouts look at Columbus simply because of this, the announcement of this soundstage. Plus, we've had technicians and suppliers that work within this industry do, conduct a site visit at the soundstage to see how they can integrate their services with that facility. In addition, Columbus State University and the Georgia Film Academy have created the first Nexus degree in the state. And that's really important. Columbus, again, was the first to create a program to train people to work in film. Currently, the program has 40 graduates. The Nexus program will certify 200 additional workers in film. And I want to pause here for just a moment and thank Paul Pierce and recognize Paul Pierce, Creative Director of the Springer Opera House. He's the guy that put us in touch with the Georgia Film Academy and created that momentum. And then, of course, Dr. Richard Baxter with Columbus State University, he leveraged that relationship, that introduction, to create the Nexus program that I just talked about. And Dr. Baxter, if you listen to his story, Dr. Baxter and his colleagues fast-tracked this training program. He did this in a matter of weeks where, in most cases, it takes months and sometimes years to have a university system-approved curriculum. Again, this program addresses the need for workforce development, which is going to put us on the map for film, make Columbus a film hub. So making Columbus that hub for film includes creating demand, and so the process is recruiting 10 films over the next three years. Consultants are telling us that that's what's needed in order to continue, to create a continuous workforce to drive demand for crew coming out of the program at CSU. And this crew is successful, excuse me, is critical to our success. And with total production budgets of $35 million, this will generate or create 500 local jobs, over 500 local jobs. So what does that all mean? Let's look a little bit deeper into this. CSU's Center for Research tells us that just three films in 12 months will generate $10.8 million in local sales and goods and services, quarter of a million dollars in sales tax revenue, $6.4 million in local labor income, and again, support 500-plus local jobs. Film in Columbus has the potential to be a real economic driver with its economic impact and its job creation. We looked at another model. Film LA tells us there are three things that are needed to attract film anywhere, anywhere in the world. And that's you have to have a skilled workforce, you have to have a robust infrastructure, and a competitive film incentive program. Columbus currently has two of those boxes checked. The Nexus Film Degree out of CSU through the GFA, that's workforce development, Flat Rock Studio, which is the infrastructure. So we've asked ourselves, how do we check all the boxes? What's missing is the local incentive. Creating Columbus Film Fund and partnering with the Columbus Economic Development Corporation and the Columbus Convention Bureau's Film Commission is the last piece to the model to make the city a film destination. We've seen this work in other cities, and Savannah, our neighbor on the other side of the state, has created success using the same type of strategy. Our goal is to raise $5 million for this fund through public-private partnership. This is to incentivize the 10 films over a three-year period. This closes the gap, this creates the infrastructure and the synergy we need to be successful. So at the end of the day, what does it all mean? It's the Columbus Film Fund puts us in the game. Film in Columbus create the 500-plus jobs, local jobs, with an average salaries of $80,000, and that's significant. It doubles the enrollment of CSU's film program with some 200 certified crew ready to go to work. And finally, Columbus hits its goal as Georgia's third film hub, putting us on equal footing with other film destinations, not just in Georgia. And got to remember, through the camera-ready program, every county in the state is vying for film. But by positioning Columbus as a third film hub, we step in front of everyone else. So we're competitive on a state level and then also in neighboring states, and we've seen their process beginning to create these incentives in the local workforce as well. And finally, I'd like to, again, thank Dr. Richard Baxter for his work. He is, he is the guy that has worked behind the scenes very quietly, putting all these pieces together, bringing the partnerships together, managing those relationships on the state level and throughout the community in order to create the success that we are on the verge of accomplishing. And then the last thing is that, since the last time we were here, our organization Visit Columbus has been re-accredited as a gold CBB, or Destination Marketing Organization. So we're the only CBB in the state to have both state accreditation at the highest level as well as on a national level through Destination Marketing International. So again, I want to applaud my team for their diligence and their hard work through that process, as we've learned through other discussions today with what the city is facing and how those types of things, the process is in place. Accreditation is an extremely laborious task, and I can't say enough about my team for making that happen, and all the things they've done for fiscal '18, and as we continue through marketing Columbus for a destination for travel.
Any questions for Peter? Peter, thank you for what you do. And let me just say, Peter talked about the Film Festival. I mean, you feel like you're in a completely different city. It's amazing how far we've come related to film. And just so you guys can make a note, Things Don't Stay Fixed was filmed here in Columbus by Bo Bartlett, the artist. I had no idea what to expect because I appreciate people that appreciate art. I have to say, I'm a little pedestrian when it comes to high art. I was blown away. It wasn't a screening, it was a focus group. And so I thought it would probably be over my head, a little symbolism or whatever artists and poets do. It is a love story to this city visually. I mean, obviously, it's a drama, but it visually is a love story to this city. Beautiful, beautiful cinema photography shots of the city from a different perspective that you just don't even think of when you live here every day. I cannot wait for people to see that.
Right, and that's essentially, you depict it that way. That's what I, the most common comment I've heard about that film is how it has shown Columbus in a very unique and special way. So I agree, it's, I think it's, can't wait for the next step.
It's just a different person, I mean, I think I have a wonderful view of the city, and I think of all sorts of beautiful things in my mind, but to see it from somebody else's eye, it was really amazing, the beauty he found in things that we just drive by and don't even look at, you know? Well, it's been submitted to the Sundance Film Festival, the Tribeca Film Festival, and a couple of others. And so it can't be shown publicly until it makes it there. But if it is selected, then it's going to put us on the map, because the whole thing is about the city of Columbus. I mean, it has characters, obviously, but it is so richly set in the city of Columbus, it's going to, it's going to put us on the map.
Yeah, we'll be at Sundance as well, so we've got our fingers crossed.
Yeah, fantastic. Well, thank you and congratulations on that. Oh, and also, let me just say, Lucy Bank Scheftel, the actress related to our Assistant City Attorney, who lives in LA, has a part in the film, so check it out. All right, Mr. City Manager, I think you've got a few more things.
Yes, thank you. I am going to have our engineer and director, Donna Newman, come forward. She has a few slides on our public safety radio upgrade. Engineer Donna Newman.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm here today to talk about the public safety radio upgrade, and as you can tell, there are several members of public safety in the audience, so this is something that's very much concerned for them. Just a very brief history, and this is certainly not all of the history, but just to kind of give you an idea about our radio system. In 1992, CCG purchased approximately 1,300, 800 megahertz radios. In 2008, rebanding of the public safety, reprogramming the frequencies, if you recall, there was an issue where FCC had issued licenses for certain frequency, and there was beginning to be an overlap between what was used for public safety and what was used for cellular phone companies. As part of that, we had about 800 radios that had to be replaced, and that cost was borne by Sprint and Nextel. In 2014, some of our radios were ceased to be supported by Motorola. And so they're no longer made, they're no longer sold. And in 2019, by the end of the year, we'll no longer be able to get parts for them. So it is urgent that we move forward with upgrading our radios. And again, we're focusing primarily on public safety. They will get the new radios, we'll take the old radios that they're currently using, put them in our fleet, and use those as spare radios and parts for our general government to such time we need to upgrade those. And so we're going to milk it as long as we can. Some of the new features with the radios that will be used by public safety will be, they have some enhanced features, they'll have encryption availability. Right now, there's not encryption availability. Noise cancellation, they'll have Bluetooth capability, GPS, which is important in the event an officer is out on a chase, you'll be able to determine where they are, or a fireman is in a building or a warehouse, you'll be able to determine where they are. And then interoperability, you know, that's something that's been identified through the years to make sure that when you have a community like we have, that several different agencies, that they're able to talk to one another on the radio system. Funding, last year's budget, or the year, this year's budget that we're operating in today, it was included for discussion purposes and intent in that budget. Our goal would be to add it to the MAP program, which is the Migration Assurance Plan, and that's what we, our council adopted in 2015. By adding it to that, we also get a 25% Georgia State Contract Discount and a 10% MAP Discount. And Motorola has offered a 3% financing with payments and arrears, meaning they will allow us, if council approves, we're going to bring it back in November for approval, we will move forward with the ordering of the radios, and our first payment will not be due until next year, in next fiscal year. So they are granting that for us. It would be in October of '19, October of '20, and October of '21. And then the other thing we're asking for, and that was discussed and included in last year's budget, was the purchase of a microwave system. What the microwave system does for us is, right now, we are on leased lines from AT&amp;T. These lines are older, and that means if something happens, we are dependent on AT&amp;T to respond. Also, they're vulnerable because they are out in the elements. They're either underground or on poles, so they're subject to being hit, they're subject to weather damage. And again, we would have to depend on And again, we would have to depend on getting somebody from AT&amp;T, and that would impact the operation of our radio system. So, the goal would be a microwave system, and that is tower-to-tower-type system so that it can communicate and it's not dependent on being hardwired, if you will. So, our goal is to include that as well. I think Angelica is going to come forward and talk about the OLOS funding.
If not, just put it on there. We'll get it over there. It's going to use, ma'am?
Okay. I can put it in there. I have it.
So, what you have here in your slide presentation packet is just the OLOS Public Safety Budget projections, just showing where we were as far as the adopted budget for FY '19 and just projecting these expenses out until FY 2024. Mainly, this slide is just to show that we do have the capacity to cover the payments out of OLOS, the Public Safety, 70% OLOS. And so, what this slide does not show is any capital for the OLOS Public Safety Departments in FY, starting in FY '20, just due to these major system replacements that we're covering. But that is a budgetary item, obviously, and that's just something that we'll have to address throughout the budget process. So, that is the primary purpose of this slide, is just show the capacity and how the funds are currently distributed, how they'll be allocated going forward. So, have any questions for me?
Any questions of Angelica? We have Counselor, let's see, Counselor Thomas?
I have a question for Donna Newman. Ms. Newman, if we, if council approves this purchase request next month, when will the radios be installed in the cars and so forth?
Our goal would be to get them ordered before the end of the year and have them functional by April/May timeframe next year. Because each one would have to be programmed, and there's about 1,200-plus radios and desk models and that sort of thing.
And this would be across all of our Public Safety Departments?
Yes, ma'am. It includes the sheriff, the police department, the metro squad, MCP, marshal's office, coroner's office, DA's office.
Fire Department.
Fire Department. So, it's all of our Public Safety that require communication with one another.
And so, we're looking at April of next year before we're fully functional with these new radios?
Yes, ma'am, because we'll have to have, they'll have to be shipped in, and then they'll have to be programmed accordingly, and that takes quite a bit of work. Obviously, it'll be a priority, and we'll get it done as soon as we can.
Do our employees do this, or is this something that Motorola does? We install them?
A majority of them are portable radios, and it would be done by Motorola, and they will bring in extra people to work on that to ensure that we get it done as fast as we possibly can.
Well, obviously, if we approve this, time is of the essence.
Yes, ma'am.
And we'd want to get these as quickly as possible and functional as quickly as possible.
Yes, ma'am. That's our goal.
We have Counselor Allen. Oops, excuse me, Counselor Allen, hold on a second. There you go.
Thank you, Mayor. Donna, the handout shows 4.9 million cost, and then the Motorola payout that Angelica went over shows about $5.5 million. Is that, can you help break that down for me?
So, what's included in FY '20 is the replacement of the microwave system, going from a wired Ethernet system to a wireless microwave system. That's included in FY '20 because it is a one-time cost that we cannot allocate over time.
And I know Donna talked a little bit about it. What's the difference between the two? One, I guess the system we have now is going to wear out or is wearing out, and this would switch us to a different system?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Currently, we are dependent on AT&amp;T, and they have a hardwired system, if you will. It's fiber optic and other type cabling in there, and it's, we do occasionally have problems where it goes down, and then we have to contact AT&amp;T, and they have to do troubleshooting and try to figure out where it's at and what needs to be done. The microwave is actually large devices that would go on the towers, and they would communicate with devices downtown and 911 and amongst each other.
So, it gets us away from the AT&amp;T system altogether?
Yes, sir. And it also, I failed to mention, but it also does away, we pay about $65,000 a year to AT&amp;T for these systems, if you will, that we use. There's like, I think, Farsh and I were talking this morning, there's like three different systems that we use, that we rent from AT&amp;T, so it would do away with that annual payment as well. And then, the microwave system is something that we would own.
So, the cost of it is, how much is it?
Well, initially, the cost was about $974,388, but with the 25% State Contract Discount and adding it to the MAP program, that's another 10%. It comes out to be the $696,687.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. And we have Counselor Davis.
Ms. City Manager, Director Newman, I don't think this relates to the matter of signaling when a citizen makes a 911 call and how it routes to 911 here locally. I ask that question because I have a lot of constituents that are really concerned and often get really confused when they call 911 and the signals bounce to across the river, to Albany or somewhere else, and sometimes it gets distorted or there's a lot of confusion in that call, and people tend to look at it as if that's CPD or whomever they're calling into 911, and then they don't respond or it doesn't get there. There's a lot of, I see there's a lot of issues that I've dealt with, and recently, within the last two weeks here on this matter. I don't think this has anything to do with the signaling. Am I right as far as that goes?
It does not. That has to do with the cell tower, you know? If you're downtown and you're down 911 and the tower's tied up, it might bounce from a tower in Phoenix City, and Phoenix City gets the 911 call and vice versa, you know?
Correct.
And so, it does not have-
Well, what I'd like to do, since we are discussing this, what I'd like to do, Ms. City Manager, is to ask you and staff to maybe call these various entities, these companies that deal with these towers or own these towers or transmit the signals, and maybe just have that conversation with them about a possible solution and what can be done. I don't know if there's any new technology out there that can counter some of these, some of the problems that are happening, but it does seem to be, in my, in the district I represent, a frequent issue.
Well, we can certainly inquire about it, and I do, I see Major Ezell back there. Would you mind, Counselor Davis, if I ask him to come forward and just-
Sure.
Because I think, you know, when you get a 911 call that, from Phoenix City, they're calling their 911, and it ends up at Columbus, there's a way that they address it, and I believe there's a way Phoenix City addresses a 911 call. I've been in Phoenix City where someone called 911 from the church I attend in Phoenix City, and it got Columbus 911, for example.
Yes.
And you have a way to address that?
Yes, sir, we do. We have an agreement with Phoenix City and Russell County that anytime they get a cell call that comes in, and that's what we're dealing with because of the location of towers and availability of towers, when they get that call, they find out it's a Columbus call, they do a transfer to that, from that caller into the Columbus 911 center, and we do likewise for them. So, you get the right center, it just delays it a little bit, but once they find out that is our call or we find out it's their call, we do that transfer.
And you're right about that. I've had to do that several times, and I'll stay on the line and stay on the line and make sure all the information gets out. I'm not sure, like I said, there's confusion out there sometimes-
Yes.
-on the citizens' half. They're not really sure. And I know when you use your smartphone versus a landline, landline's so much easier, go straight in, it's easier to track, you get the address, you get everything, and so, there's no confusion. But when you use this, sometimes there's a little, not really understand where everybody is at the time or where the call's coming in, et cetera, you know? I'm just, I'm not going to go into detail, but, and I'm not sure, I don't know if this has been a conversation in the past, but since we're talking on this subject, I would like to ask if maybe it would help.
Yeah.
You might tell me you've already done it, but if it would help to discuss a possible solution.
We've talked to-
I get those calls from people that get a little upset about it.
We've talked to the different cell phone companies, and it's hard, they've tried to, depending on what antenna on the tower, to route it to the right place, but sometimes just because of, in a busy period, the availability on those towers, it'll go across, there's one downtown Columbus is bad about it, it goes across right there behind the Old Mead Place on, right there, Dillingham Street, there's a tower there that picks up a lot of calls from Columbus. Also, up in your district, Green Island Hills area, there's a tower just across the river up there that picks up a lot from Green Island Hills. They try to adjust the towers, but they want to make sure everyone gets good coverage so they can't tune everything out, but that's the main problem with that.
Thank you.
And that's why when we answer the phone, we always say Columbus 911, so you know you've got us. Phoenix City tries to do that also. They're not as good as us about doing that, but once they realize the call, they get it to us.
And, you know, people move in and out all the time, and it seems to, you know, where I live, most of the time, I don't have a problem-
Yes.
-driving around. Sometimes I'm driving around, I do, but it seems to be an issue closer to the river.
Yes, sir.
The closer to the river you are, and I don't know if that's just because of the tower location, but, you know, maybe they could-
It's that and-
Let me call it an interceptor or something that could-
And I was just going to say, typically, it's, you know, those, from what I understand, it's those close to the river. That's why, you know, the church that I mentioned, you know, in Phoenix City, where I attend church, it's close to the river. And so, the call went to Columbus. And so, if you're downtown or close to the river, occasionally, that will happen. And so, I don't know if we're going to be 100%, but as the major says, they've tried to work on it.
Well, don't give up.
We'll keep trying, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If there are no further questions of Engineer Director regarding the Public Safety Radio Upgrade, we're going to move on to the next subject.
Let's see, we have Clifton, did you want to speak to-
Hough.
Oh, yes.
Get his resolution adopted.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, Counselor Hough, you want to press your button there?
Good morning. Thank you so much for waiting it out, delaying this for me. Last week, Mrs. Sarah Stewart of the Stewart Community Home passed, and due to her great work in this community, I had requested a resolution from the council. They're having a memorial service, I'm not sure about the time, but on Thursday at the Community, Stewart Community Home, they will have a memorial service in her honor. But in going through her history before I read this, it was really, 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 really an outstanding piece of history as far as, you'll hear me read, that she was part of her husband in the military, and she had an idea, and she came to Columbus with this idea, and she put it into action. And during the last six to eight months, I've had a chance to tour the Stewart Community Home, and they do great work there. And the new director there has increased the number of people there, I think, from about 16 to 18 to about 62 in her short period of time. They had a real good, real nice fundraiser to get started on a capital campaign to improve the facilities about a week ago, and it was well-attended and a lot of interest. So, the mayor-elect was there visiting while he was still on council, and I think a few others have been by, but it's a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful situation here. So, let me read the resolution. Whereas Mrs. Sarah Stewart, founder of Stewart Community Home, passed away on October 23rd, 2018. Whereas Mrs. Stewart traveled extensively with her Air Force husband, Harold, and their children. Whereas on one of her many visits to Columbus, she spotted the home at 1403rd Avenue that she decided to renovate and rent for a boarding care home. Whereas in April 1976, the home for senior citizens first opened in our community. Whereas in 1994, the Knight Foundation awarded a grant of $250,000 to the Stewart Community Home, which allowed the purchase of the Ed Weiner Wood School and sparked a $2 million renovation project, allowing for the expansion to 76 residents. Whereas other local foundations and citizens completed a capital campaign drive, and the Stewart Community Home continues to serve those in need. And whereas Columbus, Georgia appreciates the many contributions to this community made by Mrs. Stewart. Now, therefore, the Council of Columbus, Georgia hereby resolves, we hereby convey to the family of Mrs. Sarah Stewart our sincere condolences and deepest sympathy. The Stewart Community Home will continue to be a tremendous legacy in honor of Mrs. Stewart, and it will continue to serve the Columbus community for years to come. Let a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the family of Mrs. Sarah Stewart. I move for adoption.
Motion in second. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
All right, it is passed. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, and so, Mr. City Manager?
Madam Mayor, our Finance Director, Angelica Alexander, will provide a fund balance update at this time.
Hello again. So, the update that I'll provide today is really just an estimate. It was a request that was made at the last council meeting by Counselor Baker, just providing some information to council as far as where we are right now. As you know, we are, we just completed FY '18, and we are in the final stages of completing our audit for FY '18. So, that's why I'm saying now, it's estimated I will come back in December, once the audit is complete and finalized with the actual fund balance days. So, these numbers here are actually subject to change, but currently, for the general fund, we're estimating 23.16 days. For OLOS Public Safety, it's 35.75 days, and for OLOS Infrastructure, 5.57 days, for a total of 64.48 fund balance days. As for FY '18, and again, this is subject to change because our audit is not complete. So, here's just a chart, just showing the fund balance history going back to FY '07. As you can see here, we started incorporating the OLOS fund balance in FY '11. FY '17, the ending balance was 63.16 days, so we're up when comparing FY '17 to FY '18 as far as restoration of our fund balance reserves. There was a change in GASB requirements in FY '14 that actually changed the way fund balance was calculated, but we're making great strides in improving fund balance, particularly the general fund balance. As you can see, that's gone up from FY '17 to FY '18.
May I interrupt you just one second?
Yes.
You know, I hate to do this, but I was reading an article yesterday on the GMA Timeline, Georgia Municipal Association-
was reading an article yesterday on the GMA Timeland, Georgia Municipal Association, and saw where Macon, Georgia, has five days in fund balance. And, you know, they are now a consolidated government. So I just mentioned that, just to, to say that I think we're coming along pretty good, and, not to compare us to anyone, but I thought I'd just mention that.
It's, it's been a tough road, and, and you and the finance directors in this council have done some really difficult things and made tough choices, and the benefit of that is showing, so.
So really, the last slide was also a request made by Counselor Baker, just showing our capacity in OLOS infrastructure, projecting that out again until FY 2024. As you know, we presented last week the, the potential debt service payments for a $7 million bond that we'd like to finance. And so, this chart just shows our capacity in OLOS infrastructure. For FY '20, as it currently stands, what we're estimating is about $900,000 unallocated. Now, that unallocated figure there is what's most important here on this slide, because that is the monies that we have available, or should have available throughout the budget process, to utilize. And so what we're, we're doing here, what we're saying is, we have the capacity to afford the debt service payments from the $7 million bond. And as you see, once it gets to FY '20-
So, so let's pause right there. You know, what we said to you at the last meeting, and what you voted on today, the $7 million in Columbus Building Authority lease revenue bonds, you approved today, and you talked about it last week, 10-year term on the $7 million with debt service at $820,000, and we told you that we would have the capacity to pay the debt service for the $7 million CBA lease revenue bonds, and not interfere with or adjust any allocated, identified funding for any other projects that you indicated you want, such as resurfacing a bridge, or IT, and so forth. And so, the point of this is to show you that capacity that we told you we would have, and not interfere with other projects, if you approve the $7 million CBA lease revenue bonds. So I just wanted to make that point.
Excellent point. And that is actually the presentation. If you have any questions, I'll take them.
Yes, we have Counselor Baker.
Question on your last page, budget projections, you've got debt service 5.4 million all the way across.
Mm-hmm.
So when we pick up this new piece of debt service, does that mean something else will roll off, so it stays constant? So it's not gonna increase as we pick up the new piece of the debt service?
Well, the debt service that's listed here will not increase, because this is the 2010 bonds that we're currently paying out of OLOS infrastructure. So-
So where will the new piece come out?
The things that are, that are sort of, that roll off is listed in that prior commitments row there. We have things like the Motorola MAP, the IBM Core Switch, which that actually, the IBM Core Switch rolls off in FY '20. The IES World Project, that actually rolls off as well in FY '20. And then the court management system upgrades that we'll be incorporating into the budget in the future. So, the prior commitments columns is where we have the projects that sort of roll off and on.
And so, the new, the new piece will be paid for out of your unallocated section?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get to.
And, and again, I gotta say, as I said to the reporter when he called me, that means what you did today, there is no property tax increase with what you did today, because we've got that capacity from the OLOS infrastructure because of those things rolling off, and the debt service line is not increasing, because that would relate to property tax.
That relates to the bonds that we've-
No, 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 that debt service.
Yes, if we did a property tax increase.
That's right. That's when, Counselor Baker, I wanted to make that point, when you asked about that line item.
Right.
That's, we don't want that to change.
No, that's-
Okay. Has to do with, just forget what I just said about that.
We can show it either way.
But, but, again, it's coming from the additional capacity that we will have in OLOS, and there is no property tax increase.
Right. And my question, really, my point was just to monitor that, because I don't know how much room, when you start using up the unallocated amount, I mean, there's only so much room we have to work with, so we just need to be careful about.
Well, we have these projected out for 10 years, so.
Right. And things will roll over and roll off constantly during those 10 years. But, and it was really more about, you know, when you're gonna go out and borrow $7 million and, and, you know, I'll get the taxpayers to pay it back, you need to have due diligence, and you need to have deliberations about it, so everybody understands. It's not that I was criticizing anything, it was more of just informational, just to make sure we have that due diligence discussion, et cetera.
And I'm just happy I have good staff in my ear, they won't let me, they correct me when I say things that are wrong.
Same.
But, anyway.
Yeah, we do, we have several, we have Counselor Davis.
Probably a relevant but curious question. I'm looking at 14, 15, and 16. On the total of the fund balance, I just, are there other funds that we're not including in this somewhere?
This is just-
As a total?
Just the general fund.
I want to be clear-
Actually, both, I mean, it's including both.
Yeah.
Well, I guess my point is that going through the budget sessions and all, we've never gone under 60 days.
Oh, yeah.
We have.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. It's been presented and discussed and debated, while we sit right there.
Mayor, I think when we have approved all the budgets, they've been over 60 days, because there is a law on the, I've never seen any corrections that have been made, if that's the case, that were under 60 days. I mean, the, we have ordinances that deal with this, and we also have the issues of bond ratings, and I just don't know of any changes that have been made. And I know the budgets, we've proved have always been at 60 days or, or over.
Well, let me just say, you know, I could go back and look at that, but I can tell you, we've been below 60 days, and-
Oh, I know that.
Yeah, but you're saying, at, at the time you approved the budget, you're saying-
When we come in the budget, and this body is dealing with it, we're always over 60 days.
Yeah, and then something happened during the course of the year that you're saying that caused us to go over 60.
Maybe, or there's another fund. I guess that's my curious-
No, there's no other fund.
Question.
Right.
You know, but, but we, I could look back at that if you need me to, but my point is-
You know, like I said, it's probably irrelevant, but it, it just raises the curiosity of- Because I know, I know that what triggers and what kicks in if we don't stay over 60 days.
Yes.
And I just, we've never dealt with that.
Well, I'll say this, when we went below 60 days, I had the finance director bring to you a request that you approved, that eliminated the use of salary savings by departments during the course of the year. And when you did that, you approved that, that put us back over 60 days from, we were below 60, and we went to about 62 or 63 as a result of that.
So that, that should be added in here then, right?
Well, it is.
And where?
Included in the total then, right?
Well, that was a couple, two, a year, two years ago.
FY '17.
It's okay.
All right, okay.
And, and one thing too, in, yeah, but I did, Angelica, want to point out, what's interesting is this, the asterisks on here, and I'm glad you put that on there, because I can't recall, and you may not recall, because you may not, I can't remember if you were with us then, or, yeah, so Pam may have to recall, but when GASP changed those rules, I think it took 14 days out of reserve. So if we had been doing it the way we always had been doing it, we would have been, like, for instance, in 14, it would have been at 69 days.
Right.
And it would have been at, you know, whatever, 70 days.
Right.
And so it looks like there's this wild excess of money. But what it was, was, was to true up what all municipalities were doing, to only allow your reserves to count that money that is actually monetarily accessible to you. You could not count money you owed yourself, like from the Gulf Authority and other such things. And that took away 14 days. So even if you go back to 2007, when we were flush with cash, that should be roughly 116 days, and, and so on and so forth. In 2009, it should have been 80 days. And, and so you would have been at 60 days in 2013, but for that GASP, GASP change. So, I hope you always continue to put that asterisk, because it, it does look like a radically, you know, a very dramatic expenditure of funds went out between 13 and 14 and continued, but really, it was an accounting adjustment.
That's correct.
So, Counselor Thomas?
Ms. Alexander, under the, the budget projections, the OLOS budget projection slide, under cost allocations, FY '19 is 5K, and starting in '20, it's 70K.
That's just an estimate.
But it's $65,000.
Right.
What-
It fluctuates, actually. I mean, cost allocations are allocations that all internal, all funds pay into the general fund for the services provided by the general fund to those funds.
I understand that, but my question is, why did it go up $65,000?
That's just an estimate that we use. It, it has been, that's an estimate that we use, because it fluctuates. It has gotten as high as $70,000.
Well, and why don't we, we'll come back and tell you why it fluctuated, okay? And I get your question, you know, that seems, you know, it-
If it had gone up from 65 to 70, I probably wouldn't question it. But going up from 5 to 70, I just want to know what-
And so, for those watching on television, explain to them what cost allocation is. In other words, it's-
State current services.
All, all the departments use IT service, or human resources, or finance for things, and so a portion of, they are charged for use of HR, and IT, and other internal services, and, and so that's where a, and there's cost allocation as a result of that.
That's correct.
So I just wanted them to understand, it's internal services that are, that gets charged to, for risk management, for example, every department. We don't have a risk management in every department. So, our risk management services all, or our city attorney's office service all departments, and so there's a cost to those departments, a small nominal cost to them for that internal service. And so that's the cost allocation. But get your question, and we'll, let us just look, and so we can be specific when we-
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Yes.
Okay. All right, I don't know, it doesn't look like there's anything else at this time.
Next, I've got HR pay policy, just a couple of slides, just to, it's to share it with you, but we want the employees to see and hear this as well, and we'll make sure it gets posted, so there's clarity as to this pay policy. That's pretty simple to me, and should be to most of us, but our HR Director, Rita Hollowell.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, City Manager. Yes, this will be really brief. What I wanted to do was brief you on two internal pay process policies that I am asking the City Manager to approve. I'm not asking council to approve these policies, these are internal policies, pay process policies, but I wanted to brief council on these policies, so that you are aware of them, and so that should employees somehow or another ask you about these policies, you will be familiar with them. So the first policy is, the first policy is a final paycheck policy, and then the second policy that I'll mention is a sick bonus check policy. So the final paycheck policy, in brief, is, it gives guidance to department directors, to supervisors for human resources and finances, and employees, so that they know upon separation from this government, exactly when they will, when to expect their final paycheck. So basically, this policy says, in fact, an employee who separates or is separated from employment for any reason, will be paid his or her final earned unpaid wages on the next regular payday, on which wages would otherwise be due and payable. And the second part of the paycheck policy says, it relates to the fringe benefits. This includes annual leave, holiday pay, and compensatory time, that, that are due and payable upon separation of employment, will be made two weeks following the payment of final wages. That's it in a nutshell. It gives guidance to, it just puts in writing a practice that helps explain how a separated employee will receive their final wages and any other benefits that are due to them.
So, if, because I know employees are watching, so is to, I hope I don't confuse them more. But we, you know, as we went to our new payroll system, you know, we were paying you before you actually worked out your two weeks. And so, you know, because we cut checks on Tuesday, and you get paid on Friday, and if you were here Tuesday, but you stayed out the rest of the week, we paid you for three days that you didn't work. And remember, we fixed the payroll system where you're paid for the two weeks in arrears. You, it's for the previous two weeks that you worked. And so when we did a bonus, and we caught, did things to make up the lag in time for employees, because we were going to this new system. And now we have this new system, and you're paid, if you were gonna get paid this Friday, it would have been for what you worked two weeks ago. And you're completing your two weeks this Friday, you'll get paid two weeks from this Friday for that. And so, when employees leave their employment with the government, you know, they don't just leave on Friday and go to the HR office on Monday and say, "I'm here to pick up my check that you owe me for the two weeks I worked." No, you'll get that on the regular next pay period, which is two weeks from now. And in my day, when I worked in the mill, we called it a week in the hole. If you all, you all wouldn't know anything about that, but. Right. I, I thought I'd just throw that in. But, and so it's, you know, you'll get paid two weeks from now, although you're not with the city anymore, for what you worked your last two weeks. I hope that is pretty clear. And some of you know about working a week in the hole and all that, you know. But, anyway.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. The next policy that I wanted to present-
Let's see, we've got Counselor Woodson.
Just a quick question. Do we have where people can see, you know, online or your office, which pay period covers which weeks? So they're familiar. Like, for instance, in my job, we have a form that's on our website, on our employee website.
Yes.
And on there, it says, okay, payday, I'm gonna say October 31st, let's say, it would tell you, October 31st is payday, cutoff is on this day, and you're gonna get paid for the week ending and blank and blank.
Is that published for every employee? Yes, we have it, but to answer, is it published for every employee to see?
Just food for thought.
We can absolutely do it.
And I can get you a copy of it, so you can see. And it's very helpful, because people know then.
Well, it's something that we can put on the employee bulletin board or something, that's posted, that's online.
Yeah.
And they can go and see.
Just, just that's why, I mean, it's nothing important. I just was wondering, because a lot of times I get, you know, I used to get a lot of questions, but now, since they did that, the, you know, the employee itself will say, "Hey, don't forget to do my payroll, it's cutoff on this day."
Well, but I, but I can tell you, most employees can tell you when they're gonna get paid, in December and January, they, they know the dates.
No, I'm not talking about the dates, I'm talking about- No, I'm not talking about the dates, I'm talking about the weeks that it covers.
Yeah.
And when it cuts off, because if they need to make corrections, they have to do it by a certain date. Because if the correction isn't done by that date, you're not going to see it in that paycheck you're waiting. So it was just a question, it's not something we have to do, but it's beneficial.
It's a good point.
I mean, it helps us.
It's a good point, and we do have something called Employee Self-Service where that is posted and we're trying to roll that out to all of our employees now where they can see that, those pay periods, they can see previous checks that they would have received and those sorts of things, but very, very good point taken.
Yeah, not, you know, just an idea. I don't know if we were doing that because it's very helpful.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So the second policy that I, internal policy that I wanted to present to Council is the sick bonus check policy. It makes clear the employees who are eligible to receive a sick bonus check at the end of the leave year. This will assist human resources, finance, and supervisors to ensure that employees who are eligible to receive a sick bonus check actually receive that. It's, this is more of a clarifying policy for us. And so it reads, it's very simple, employees who are on payroll and in active status at the end of the leave year are eligible to receive a sick bonus check as authorized by City Council. The leave year ends the last pay period in November of each year, and this is in accordance with ordinance sixteen B dash fifteen dash six two.
All right, Madam Mayor, if there are no questions.
No questions.
That's all we have on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so next, Madam Mayor and Council, Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin will come and present a matter requested by Counselor John House. It's the public safety take-home car update.
Good morning, Mayor and members of Council. As the City Manager has indicated, I'm just going to provide you with an update of the public safety take-home car program that we currently have. And the departments, of course, that we're going to be looking at are those public safety, which include police, sheriff, the marshal, fire EMS, Muskogee County Prison. And then at the end, we will have a summary of those departments and the take-home cars that they currently have. I do have representatives from the various departments that are here to answer any specific questions that you may have. And the first department that we're going to be looking at is the Police Department. And they currently have four hundred and four sworn officers and one hundred and two non-sworn personnel. Of that, there are two hundred and twenty-five pursuit, take-home pursuit vehicles, and those are the persons who are in the Patrol Bureau, the two hundred and twenty-five blue and whites that we see every day. The take-home non-pursuit administrative vehicles that they have include, it's a hundred and thirty-six of those, ninety-seven of those are unmarked, those are the detective vehicles, and then, of course, there are thirty-nine administrative vehicles. And these, again, are all sworn officers and the, and includes the one hundred and thirty-six take homes. There are no administrative non-sworn vehicles that they have. And of that two hundred and twenty-five that they have, ninety-five are outside of Muskogee County. They have ninety-five take-home vehicles that would go outside of Muskogee County. And fifty-four of the ninety-five would go in Alabama if they were to take them home. Fifty-four would be in Alabama. So right now, they do not have any of the assigned vehicles that, in these categories, the Alabama or those outside of Muskogee County that actually are taken outside of Muskogee County. They park them at an authorized location and pick up their POV, drive it home, come back, wherever they park that vehicle, and come on back down to work. They have an annual fuel cost of seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven. That was actual usage for FY eighteen. That's what they actually used for FY eighteen. And what they have currently budgeted is nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. Assistant Chief Gil Sluchek is here to answer specific questions regarding that. Yes, ma'am?
Ms. Goodwin, the ninety-five take-home vehicles outside of Muskogee County is not included in the two twenty-five up above?
It is included.
It is included.
It is included. It's part of the two twenty-five, but it's those, it's just ninety-five of the two hundred and twenty-five live outside of Muskogee County, and they currently don't take them.
And they currently cannot, so the.
That's correct. And of the ninety-five, fifty-four of those are in Alabama.
Right.
And if I may, when you say they currently don't take them home, they take them somewhere?
As indicated, they take them to a otherwise location. Yes.
Or some of them are parked at the headquarters, are they not?
Some headquarters, some are, you know.
Could be a fire station or somewhere.
Different locations.
Okay, I just want to, I just want to make sure of my numbers. So we're looking at a total take-home.
Two twenty-five.
Of two twenty-five. And if we add, if we change the policy to allow those who live outside of Muskogee County, we will not increase the two twenty-five?
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I've got all of that.
And if there's any corrections?
No, we're good.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Do we know the locations where they leave these vehicles at?
Just different locations, depending on where they live. I don't think everybody's not going to keep them in the same location. Yeah, whichever.
No, I'm not talking about making it public.
Whichever gets them closer to their home as long, in Muskogee County. And fire stations are some of those and other locations.
Yeah, and I'm not talking about making it public. I was just wondering if we ourselves knew.
Sure. Yeah.
Okay.
And of course, their annual vehicle maintenance cost is five hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars. And that is based on just the last full year, two thousand and eighteen.
Counselor Gary Allen has a question.
Thank you. Ms. Goodwin, do we, of the ninety-five, do we know the mileage they would drive to their home?
Yes, they do know that. I don't have the information. I think I've been talking with Chief Sluchek yesterday, some are just a couple of miles away from, come.
But I guess I'm looking for a number. How much would the extra fuel cost be to the city?
Okay.
For that extra mileage?
Okay.
And, and that's.
I'm looking for a ballpark.
A good question. I don't, I don't know if you know that.
He does.
Okay.
The average vehicle would go eight point five-five miles outside of Muskogee County, which means a total of seventeen point one miles round trip. If these vehicles were to drive that distance every day, we're talking about probably a hundred and twenty-four gallons of gas a day extra. Today, our average usage is about twelve hundred gallons a day, so.
That's both Georgia and Alabama?
Yes, ma'am, that's, that's total, Georgia and Alabama. Yes, ma'am.
So what's the, what's the numbers? I'm looking for a ballpark number of costs, annual cost on fuel.
About a hundred gallons a day. I don't know how much we pay.
A day?
Yes, for a day.
Okay.
We currently burn about twelve, we average about twelve hundred gallons a day, and we're looking at somewhere around a hundred gallons a day more.
What is our cost for fuel per gallon?
We get, and I'm sure Director Beegler is in the back, but we get prices daily and I don't know, and I'm saying that because I want her to come and tell me. And so I'll give that to you here shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Now, that would be the additional cost of a hundred, about a hundred gallons a day, but we feel that we can absorb that without increasing our fuel budget for the year.
And what happens if we have a recession or the gas prices go up to three or four dollars a gallon or, I mean, what, is that absorbable in your, in your budget?
Well, if it's not, we'd have to change the policy back.
Well.
More increased budget?
And that's one thing I think we need to communicate. If we decide to change the policy, this is something that can be taken away if the recession or economy turns or something like that.
And that's why I did want you to have, and Deputy City Manager, show you the actual in eighteen and what's budgeted in nineteen, and you can see that there's an increase in the actual, the budgeted over the actual cost of fuel. But you're, you're right.
So what you're saying is, year to date, they spent a little over seven hundred thousand, but they budgeted nine hundred and thirty-six.
That was last year's, last fiscal year at the end of June thirtieth this year.
Okay.
Their actual was seven twenty-three, but they didn't have enough money during that fiscal year, so we increased the fuel budget for them this fiscal year from seven twenty-three to nine hundred and thirty-six thousand. So you can see it went up more than two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
And, and I think, Counselor, and you're asking some good questions, and it would be good to maybe do a follow-up with you because the Deputy City Manager makes a good point, too, in saying that a lot of it depends on the number of vacancies that they have and number of police officers.
Well, I guess the other thing that concerns me is if we move to this, if we change the policy, it would basically encourage those that are interested to move outside the county. And I understand it's a retention, I understand it may be something we could use to, as a carrot, to pull someone in to serve in our police department. But the cost we're talking about right now, and I did some rough numbers from our conversation a couple of weeks ago, I'm thinking it's somewhere around a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars just for the police department annually, just on fuel. And I'm not, that doesn't include the increase in costs, that it would be a small percentage, but there would be some increase in, in the vehicle maintenance cost, which is, right now, it's five and a half, five, five hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. So my concern is, you know, that, it's an increasing, it could be an increasing cost every year.
Yeah.
That we would not really have any control over, but it would just be ever-increasing potentially. And we're still just talking about just the police department.
Right. And this, yeah.
So let me ask while you're there, the numbers that Ms. Goodwin presented to us, are there any others that drive, that take cars home that live outside the county in the other categories that she's listed here? She's focusing only on the two twenty.
No, sir. The ninety-five officers live outside of the county. Now, the officers that would actually be affected by this, what we're asking for is officers who live in counties that border Muskogee County, so we would actually go down to seventy-three officers in that, in that category. We have ninety-five that live outside, but seventy-three would be affected.
Okay, so we have some that live beyond the counties that actually border Muskogee.
That's correct.
Well, that was my next question, was how far do we allow them to go out?
We were just asking for those counties that geographically border Muskogee County.
Okay. Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to look at the numbers and, and it's, it's not anything against the take-home policy, it's just how much is it going to cost us if we go in this direction?
And so, Counselor, back to your cost, fuel per gallon, today's cost is one point eight seven five per gallon. And as I said to you, we do purchase fuel daily and we get the best price that we can get from the various vendors, and that's where we get our fuel from daily based on the best price that day. And it's one point eight seven five per gallon today.
Is that a dollar eighteen?
A dollar eighty-eight cents roughly, dollar eighty-eight cents. Eight, one, yeah, dollar eighty-eight cents. And, and so I don't know, but the other question, I didn't know, Counselor Allen, as you ask those questions, once they get the vehicle home, are they able to do other things with the vehicle after?
When you take the take-home car home, even those officers now in Muskogee County, you can drive it to a part-time job, you can drive it to training, you can drive it to work. You can't take your wife and kids to the grocery store, you can't go shopping in it. It's, we limit as to what you can do with the vehicle.
And so if there are no other questions, we'll go back to Deputy City Manager Goodwin, because that's just the police.
I don't see any, I don't see any lights, City Manager.
And, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So we can continue the presentation, please.
Okay. Next, we have the Sheriff's Office, and of course Sheriff Tompkins is here for, for follow-up. They currently have two hundred and forty-two sworn officers, one hundred non-sworn personnel. Take-home vehicles, pursuit vehicles, there are twenty-four of those. They actually have forty-five pursuit vehicles, but twenty-five of those are take-home. They also have forty non-pursuit administrative sworn personnel take-home vehicles. They have total fifty-four unmarked vehicles, but only forty of those are taken home or used as, as take-home vehicles. They have no administrative non-sworn vehicles. There are twenty-three of the vehicles, twenty-three of those, of their pursuit vehicles are outside of Muskogee County, and twelve of those are taken home. So of the twenty-three that are outside of Muskogee County, only twelve are currently taken home, and eleven of those are in Alabama. Eleven of the twenty-three are in Alabama. Twelve of the others are taken home. So they're included in that twenty-three. So, questions? Do I?
We have Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Okay, to clarify, there are twenty-three that live outside of the county.
Outside of Muskogee County.
And today, there are eleven that do take their car home.
There are twelve that are taken home.
That take their car home, even though we have a policy that they're not supposed to.
Twelve that are taken home, and Sheriff may want to clarify.
Hey, yes, we do authorize a few of those to take them home because our bomb squad person, who has to be on call, even though he doesn't live in Muskogee County, he's allowed to take that vehicle home. Our SRT commander, though he does not live in Muskogee County, I believe they each live in Harris County. So we do have a few that we've made exceptions to based on their need to be able to be called back onto, back to Muskogee County.
Has, has this been a longstanding policy with the Sheriff's Department?
Pretty much, yes, sir.
Do you know if it was, if, if there was an agreement made with the administration for the Sheriff's Department to allow that to happen, since we do have a policy that you're not supposed to take your cars home out of county?
No, sir, I'm not aware of an agreement.
But it's, well, it's concerning to me, I'm not sure about the other counselors, that the city has a policy and it's not being followed. Would you be willing to sit down and talk about that?
I'd be willing to talk about it, sir, but I certainly understand our need for why we are, we've made those exceptions on these particular twelve people.
Well, I understand the points you're making, but we also have similar positions in the police department, but yet they're following the policy.
I understand, and I'm, I'm willing to discuss that.
Okay, thank you.
Their annual fuel cost or actual as of FY eighteen was one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven eighty-one, and they have budgeted for this current fiscal year one hundred and eighty thousand dollars with an annual maintenance cost of a hundred and fifty-three thousand and sixty-eight dollars. and fifty-three thousand and sixty-eight dollars. And again, currently, no one in Alabama takes those vehicles home. Next, we have the Marshal's Office, and I see Captain Larry Parker is here to address any concerns here. They have twenty-one sworn persons, four non-sworn. There are currently eighteen pursuit vehicles that are, that take-home pursuit vehicles. They have six administrative sworn vehicles. These are unmarked vehicles, six of those. There are four vehicles that are, would go outside of Muskogee County, and three would go to Alabama, and of course, the three is included in that four. And right now, those assigned vehicles are not taken home, but parked at an authorized location, as some of the others. Their fuel costs for FY eighteen, their actual was thirty-four thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars, and their current budgeted fuel cost is twenty-eight thousand thirty-two dollars, with an annual maintenance, vehicle maintenance cost of seventeen thousand seven oh two. Questions?
We have Counselor Allen.
Okay. I want to make sure I understood what you said.
Okay.
Are there any take-home cars in the Marshal's Department that currently drive outside Muskogee?
There are four, but they currently do not go outside. They park them at an authorized location, so they do not take them-
So they're following the policy?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
That's correct. Next, we have Fire EMS and Chief Meyer-
Counselor, I'm sorry, Counselor Woodson?
Okay.
I just want to understand, in the budget, or the actual budget was thirty-four thousand six hundred and sixty-five, but for two thousand and nineteen, it's less. Is that because of?
They, they, that's as of June thirtieth.
Oh, as of June thirtieth.
Yeah, that's, that's what they ended the year with, thirty-four thousand six hundred and sixty-five, but their current new budget is the twenty-eight thousand thirty-two dollars.
So, from the previous year, they went over the budget?
If it was the same, yes. It was the same, so they went over.
They went over?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. And with, I'm sorry, Fire EMS, they currently have three hundred and seventy-five sworn persons, nine non-sworn personnel. They have two pursuit vehicles, and twelve to pursuit, take-home vehicles, and twelve take-home pursuit administrative vehicles, two take-home administrative non-sworn vehicles that are taken home. There are a total of seventeen that would go outside of Muskogee County. Of that seventeen, five are in Alabama, that if they were to take them home, they would be going to Alabama. Five of the seventeen would be going home. Their annual fuel cost is one hundred and ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars, that ended the year June thirtieth. Their current budget is two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, with an annual vehicle maintenance cost of two hundred and eighty-six thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars. And again, those assigned take-home vehicles outside of Muskogee County and Alabama are not currently taken home, but they park at an assigned location. And Chief Meyer is here for any specific questions regarding that.
Mayor.
Yep. They're following policy, yes.
Yes, did you have something? I, I don't have anybody lit up.
No.
I'm sorry.
Okay. And we have now MCP, Muskogee County Prison. They have one hundred and twelve sworn officers, and of course, the warden is here. There are four non-sworn staff. There are three take-home pursuit vehicles. No administrative sworn or civilian non-sworn vehicles at MCP. There are two take-home vehicles outside of Muskogee County, and of the two, both of them live in Alabama, and they currently do drive their vehicles home to Alabama. There are the fuel costs, FY eighteen, sixteen thousand six hundred and ninety dollars, and for FY nineteen, they budgeted fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, with an annual vehicle maintenance cost of four thousand nine eighty-seven. Okay? Questions?
We've got Counselor Allen.
Okay? And-
Wait, we got Counselor Allen.
If I understood you right, you said there are two vehicles within-
That go to Alabama currently. They do drop them.
Could, could we ask the warden to explain?
Good morning. I guess what I'm looking for is the, the city has a policy that you don't drive city vehicles outside the county, and you have, I think you have two-
Well, okay, yeah.
-that are driven. I'm just looking for-
Yeah, I'm aware, I'm aware of that also. The George Department of Corrections policies govern institutional operations and care and custody of inmates. They require administrative duty officers, which is me and, and the two deputy wardens. So they're on call twenty-four seven, three sixty-five to respond to escapes, bomb threats, natural disasters, active shooters, any, anything we got within the institution, natural disaster, industrial accidents, hostage situation, I mean, it's on and on and on. Anyway, we, we were first responders to, to those emergencies, those three.
At the prison?
Yes. And it requires thirty-minute response time back to the institution.
So, does the on-call rotate between the three?
That, we, we rotate one in charge, one on call, so two's, two, two's on call all the time, two of the three.
Okay. Have you talked to the administration about you not following the policy?
No, I thought it was, it was okay due to the policy saying Department Director could approve all other circumstances.
I can't, I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Huh?
I cannot hear you.
I said, the policy states that the Department Director can approve all other circumstances if I'm not mistaken.
We'll have to check into it. I don't know that the Department of Corrections could trump, that we could certainly have, I don't know if the Department of Corrections could trump anything that the council did, but I'd have to have the city attorney.
Well, they're requiring, GDC requires that, and then, and then, and I understand what part of that says, but part of it also says Department Director can approve all other circumstances. That's under the fleet policy-
Yeah.
For take-home, for take-home car.
Well, that would not be accurate related to local policy. Department, if that was the case, the police chief could go ahead and do it himself, too. But no, that would, that's not the local policy, that the department here has the authority to, to supersede law or what has been approved by this council.
Right. And, and I don't know, I know there are some things related to the institution that the Department of Corrections dictates and we have to do, and-
Right.
-council couldn't pass ordinances, but I don't know about this, and so we need to get the city attorney, I need to see whatever policy that is you're referring to. We need to get the city attorney to check it out and, and see how this, how there may or may not be a conflict, but, yeah. Otherwise, it is a current, present policy.
The deputy wardens were residents in Muskogee County when they took the positions. It's only been, I guess, three months, three, four months since they've been doing it.
All right. Well, we'll have to look into that, so.
Okay. In summary of those, of the public safety departments, there are four hundred and sixty-eight take-home vehicles, two hundred and ninety-five of those are pursuit vehicles, two hundred and ten of those are unmarked or admin vehicles, a hundred and twenty-three of those would go outside of Muskogee County, and seventy-five would go outside of Alabama, but that seventy-five, of course, is included in that one hundred and twenty-three number that is outside of Muskogee County. Questions?
Yes, we've got Counselor Thomas.
I want to go back to what Chief Slucet, Slucet-
Sluchek.
What he said. Of the ninety-five that are outside Muskogee County, you said only seventy-something would be-
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three would be subject to this because they are in adjacent counties, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So, Ms. Goodman, do you know of that hundred and twenty-three, are there others? Anybody in the Sheriff's Department, or the Fire Department, or the Marshal's Department that does not, that do not live in adjacent counties?
No, I do not know that.
So, we're not really talking about a hundred and twenty-three?
Mm-hmm.
We're talking about at least a hundred and three.
Well, you had twenty that are not in adjacent counties, right?
And we would not be, because I think, I, I didn't, I, I'm just learning of this policy, that it was only, or at least you were considering only adjacent counties.
Is that, is that a, a police department requirement, or is that in the policy? Does anybody?
No, that's obviously police.
I think, yeah, he's saying, police department is only considering those that are bordering, bordering counties.
Yeah, and I was not aware of that.
Yes.
Yeah, and so, and so, yeah, we, we would need to get that information, and I don't know if that would be the policy for all of the other public safety agencies as well, if you were going to move in, in, yeah, so.
How long has this policy been in place? It's like twenty, twenty-three years or something, isn't that right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we've got Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. Since we've been, since this issue came up, I've talked with several counselors, including Counselor House, and several in public safety, and I, I would like for council to consider revitalizing the Take Home Car Committee, to just, I mean, if we're going to look at this, we just really ought to go ahead and take a, a broad view at everything. And Counselor McDaniel was chair of that several years ago, I think it was back in the nineties, and that's, that's how long it's been, since I think we've, we've taken an exercise like this. But I would just like for us to, in thinking through this type process and this request, I, I would like for us to maybe think about approaching it in that fashion, and just take a, a look at everything at one time, so.
Fire, you mentioned the-
Yeah, yeah, yes, I made that motion.
So, your emotions refer to the commission or some sort of reform?
Reform a take, reinstitute the Take Home Car Committee-
Of council.
Of council. And I would, I think it would probably be good for us to include in that, to work with us as the city auditor, to help gather information and data, and, and look, crunch the numbers kind of thing, so I think that would be good, a good approach.
That was a motion, and Pops Barnes seconded it. Is there any discussion? I know we've got several things. Do we have any discussion to that motion? Counselor Thomas?
Um, hold on, I'll, I'll-
Well, I don't know where you went, because, okay, there you are.
Going along with what Counselor Allen said, I think there probably are a num, excuse me, are a number of people that would be ex officio members of that committee. I'd like to see the committee itself be made up of counselors, and then the internal auditor as an ad, as an ex officio. We certainly would need people from the public safety departments, one from each department, not necessarily the, the chief, but someone that the chief sent to help us with all of these kinds of deputy city manager, Goodman, as an ex officio, but use whatever sources we can, because I think this is a issue that is not going to be something that is going to be, you know, just easy to do. In the last couple of days, we've discovered that if you drive one of our cars in Alabama, Alabama liability, Alabama, you know, the liability is, is different. So, you know, there are all of those kinds of things. So, I would, I would ask that the committee be counselors, but the, that we have ad hoc members as needed, as determined by the committee.
All right. We have Counselor Davis.
And, and from my position, I have some reservations, and I, I appreciate the conversation, dialogue, and just talking about, we've talked about this for quite a while. I think we've just never really, I think there's always been talk about reconvening the Take Home Car Committee, and, and I think that would be very appropriate. I do look at this, just some points, I do look at this as a budgetary matter. I, I think you got to look at that, because there's several factors, fuel costs, there's wear and tear, there's maintenance, there's accidents, there's all that, and I, I don't really have a clear understanding of that, and it would take a detailed analysis to understand that, because, keep in mind, every time we go through these budgets, I think you've got some departments that have come under budget, and then they want to utilize that funding for other purposes, whether pay increases, or positions, et cetera, and then you've got some departments that are over budget. And, you know, and I, I, you know, it makes me question when you talk about being able to accommodate it within your budget, when I know these budgets, we just went through the budget session, and they were very tight, very tight. Everybody said they didn't have any money. Everybody said that. So, you know, I question if there's, you know, the needs at that time versus now, we're looking at something that, that I would probably not put in the priority category, more of a, you know, and maybe some may view it as a, as a perk, but when I view it, I say, look, if you've got extra funding in your budgets, I'd rather put it in the officers' pockets versus a perk for a few, and not the many or, or everybody. I mean, you got to really understand that. The internal auditor, I think, is the appropriate person to, to do that work, that's why we have him. You're also going to have to look at policy. We don't have, I don't think we ever really have a policy right now that's going to have to be drawn up as it relates to interstate, or counties, et cetera. I'm not, I'm not sure. It may be in some and may not in others, but if you're going to do this across the board, I think you'd need a general policy that would address it all, and I'm not sure, you know, the, you know, abuse comes to my mind, other things come to my mind, you know, people would question, people taking cars around on, on using, using the city fuel for their own purposes. These are a lot of questions that I have that I think need to be answered, and then you got, also, you have a new public safety director that's coming in as well, that would probably want to, want to take a, a close look at it. So, those are just some thoughts. I think it's very appropriate that the car committee be reconvened to look at all this stuff, if, if we're all looking at pursuing and, and moving forward with this. I, I do want to highlight again, I think one of, Mayor, you know this, one of the purposes, one of the, the, I guess, that was presented us, and was presented to you and the city manager, was the need of vehicles. The need of vehicles, and what was being said was the mileage, not just this past year, but before. Mileage was a big thing. We need new vehicles because they've hit a certain mileage threshold, so, you know, you have to start looking at now the, where mileage starts. If that is the case, then we're looking at a mileage issue. Are we going to be able to replace these vehicles on a regular basis when we can't even do that now? I think, I think the police chief came in and made a very, very passionate plea to this council, and we went into the reserves and funded more vehicles. Other departments wanted more vehicles, but we looked at that as a, as a priority. So, now you've got a situation where you have to, you're going to have to replace more vehicles because of the wear and tear and the mileage on them on, on base. So, can we do that? Can we still meet the needs of the department? Those are just questions I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you. And as to the commission, obviously, I only have a few more weeks, and I wish you all well in your, in all of your future commissions. But I, I will say, do not forget, for your future public safety director, and I don't expect that you will, that the charter actually requires the mayor to be involved in that. So, and, and I just, because I think it's always good to look, it's, it's three dash one oh four, section five, and so do look at that, because a lot of times, because we have a very informal and friendly relationship here, we call people and ask them to get us information, and that's all good, but, you know, taking it to that next step without the mayor- that the charter actually requires the mayor to be involved in that, so, and I just, because I think it's always good to look, it's three dash one oh four, section five, and so do look at that, because a lot of times, because we have a very informal and friendly relationship here, we call people and ask them to get us information, and that's all good, but, you know, taking it to that next step without the mayor, public safety director being involved is just not good policy, so do take a look at that charter provision, there's a reason why they put it in there, and it's lasted forty years, so, all right, we've got Counselor Baker.
I guess my question was to the motion, and I guess the city attorney would have to advise, the committee that you're talking about reinstating, I don't know if it could be handled in the method we've used in recorder's court, a clerk of council, some of the somewhat informal committee, otherwise you're putting, we just talked about this, we're putting it together, another group, it could be subject to open meeting notifications, minutes, another load on the clerk of council, because this could get quite extensive, so, city attorney, I don't know what context this has to come under, but if it could be handled outside of that, fine, if not, then that's just the way it is, I guess.
Yes, okay, we've got, hold on a second, we've got the city attorney, yes?
Yeah, I think the smaller your committee, the better, Counselor, because if it's a formal committee, it will be subject to open meetings rules.
Okay, is that it? All right, we've got a motion and a second to form a commission, and so, there's no one else that wants to speak to it. All those in favor, please state aye. Are there any opposed? All right, and so we'll just wait for some direction, I guess, to the city manager or myself, I'm happy to do what I can to facilitate it, working with Mayor Lett Henderson, I'm sure setting up the meetings after, or we can meet anytime, but after the first of the year, we have Counselor Woodson.
Yes, I want to just clarify, when we were talking about, excuse me, the committee that was previously, we're not talking about reappointing them, we're talking about looking at who was in that committee, and then establish a new group, am I correct? Or a combination of both?
It would be from this body.
Okay, all right.
It might be the entire body.
Correct, not, I don't think it'll be the entire body, but I just wanted to make sure, because in the conversation I heard, and there might be some individuals in, in this group that might be interested that wasn't part of it previously, so, just to look into that. And who's going to come up with this committee? You are, Gary, since it was your good idea.
Yeah.
Okay, so Gary's going to bring it back to us, and then we'll go from there. I recommend, can we make recommendations, or we have to wait till you come back?
It's the council committee, council makes recommendations.
How many people will be on it?
Ten.
Well, we'll be back with you, because I want to make some recommendations, thank you.
All right, I think that's it, thank you so much, everyone.
With that, Madam Mayor and Council, I'll call up Director John Hudgens, Building Inspections and Codes, to talk about tiny homes.
Good morning, Council. Just kind of coming back to give you guys an update on tiny houses, and where we, where we stand. Just kind of quickly, what is a tiny house? A tiny house is defined as a single-family home, four hundred square foot or less, excluding lofts. Everyone asks, where did that four hundred feet come from? And during my travels last week, I talked to a few officials in ICC, and the concern of why it was four hundred square feet is to legally transfer on the highway, without having to have a special permit or anything like that, so that's why you get an eight-and-a-half foot wide by, I think it's sixty-five, including the cab and the trailer, so, that's kind of where that four hundred square foot number came from. So, tiny homes are built in different ways, lofts, without lofts, indoor, outdoor, those kind of things, but we're going to specifically deal with the ones that would fall under my jurisdiction, which would be fixed structures, not on wheels or on chassis. So, just once again, kind of the average house is about twenty-five hundred square feet, and like I said, a tiny house is somewhere between a hundred and four hundred square feet, so just kind of some comparisons there about, you know, sizes and things like that, you know, a hundred and forty-four tiny houses could fit on a football field, so that's just trying to give you a scale of that, that type of living. So, wouldn't be any recreational vehicles, like we spoke to before, those are RVs, DOT, transportation deals with those, no manufactured homes, in the, in the mobile home sense of the word, so we wouldn't be dealing with those, those are still regulated through the state, and we just check and make sure the tags are current on those vehicles. But modular buildings, which are built in a, in a warehouse, and then brought to the site, is what we're, what would be one option. Oh, I'm sorry, I have a whole packet of stuff, I'm sorry, that little smaller packet is, is all my stuff, I'm sorry. So, ideally there, the way we have it set up with the city right now is the modular building permit, which is actually in here, the checklist for that, ideally, we would get, once they get approval from DCA, the Department of Community Affairs, to approve the structure, then they would be able to bring it into the jurisdiction, they'd be able to set it, and we would do our inspections from there, we would do a foundation inspection, and then we go from there. And the other option is site-built, so if somebody chose to want to build it on a site for that, under those requirements, under four hundred square feet or less, they would be able to do it, and they would follow our residential permit review, just like they would follow any other, any other property. So, plan review, have to pull the permit, they would still have to perform all the inspections, the trades, we have to come in there and look at electrical, mechanical, all of that, like we would do anything else, and then get their certificate of completion. All right, so, the concern, the, the ability to get to this point would be the Tiny House Appendix S, which has been approved this year by the state of Georgia. So, DCA's already approved this, the concerns before is, everybody's like, well, why couldn't we build tiny houses before? The main reason was the item number one there, which is R three oh four, because your minimum habitable room had to be between seventy and a hundred and twenty square feet, so therefore, if every room had to be that size, then you'd be out of a tiny home, because by the time you calculated your bedroom, your bathroom, your kitchen, all of those sizes, you'd be over the four hundred square feet, so that's kind of where this, this ball started to roll, and that's why it was, it was able to, now that there's an option for that to happen. So, the 2012 Appendix S is based off of the 2018 IRC appendix, but the state, we made ours a little bit stricter, based off of smoke detectors and maximum heights on lofts. The question was before, that third bullet there, is the maximum height on a loft was five foot, we didn't want to make it six foot eight, which is in the original, the 2018 appendix, because then you could more or less cheat and get you another second story, so the intent is to still keep your size small, and we didn't want, want to be able to people, because the loft is technically exempted, but if you make it five feet, it's not a walkable area where you'd be standing upright. Ship ladders and all those things have also been allowed with certain specifications, which you'll see in, you should have a copy of that, which is Appendix S allows those alternative tread devices as well. So, we performed a, kind of the last time I came to you guys at the end of July, and gals, I'm sorry, we spoke about kind of getting the community output, getting community feedback as to how the community would feel about having this, so, I picked the best day ever, which was the October thirteenth, which is right before Hurricane Michael was supposed to come through, so, we had a little concerns about the turnout, but I talked to the speaker, and the speaker was still willing to come down from Atlanta, and they came down and spoke, and so we continued to have the class. So, we had about, we had about sixty people attend, various disciplines, which I'll let you see that breakdown here shortly, Will Johnston of Tiny House Atlanta, and the Microlife Institute, who's kind of an advocate for tiny house living, so, like I said, I don't know everything about them, but they've been working on them in different communities, and that'll be the person that would be better to, to field those questions. And then after, after lunch, we did a live stream on my department's Facebook page, and we got over a hundred and twenty people to view and interact and see what was going on, so, should be a video recap to kind of show y'all what, what we, what we did.
Well, good morning, everyone, it is Hurricane Michael watch, but let's talk tiny. I'm Will Johnston, the executive director of the Microlife Institute, and what we do is basically educate, advocate, research, and do pilot projects all around the micro-built environment. I'm here with also Kid Bucero, she is, basically, we are equal on the team, we just love what microspaces can do for community, we don't think it is for any one group, it can be an option for all, and we just see the benefit of what microspaces can do and add to our community, to help add homes, businesses, and just add overall density that allows that walkability that a lot of people are looking for right now.
Good morning, I'm Kid Bucero, and I joined Will about three years ago, I've got background in similar development, and I've just become passionate about smaller spaces, as a, as an option for sustainability, just lower cost of living, and so just very excited to be able to work with him, to really be able to grow our organization, our nonprofit, to be able to do more research, and to be able to speak with people like yourselves that are interested in this, and interested in just looking at what the legal laws are currently in Georgia, how it can be implemented, and what other places around the state, region, and country are doing to embrace this movement and address the lack of housing and the demand that's not being met currently, so.
I started this organization about five years ago, I downsized myself, so, you know, again, today we're going to be talking about the small built environment, and what that means, but also, there's a psychological and sociological side to this movement that a lot of people, and a lot of demographics, and a lot are interested in, and my story started, I just stopped, my, quit my job and sold everything, and I downsized, and I really liked the fact that I had that freedom to be able to do a lot more with my life, than not have to worry about maintaining a twenty-six hundred square foot house, so, the idea was, all right, who else is doing this? And then that's when I stumbled upon the tiny house movement. This is an innovative opportunity, I think, for housing, it's definitely needed, we need diversified housing in this community, not just around Uptown, I think all of ours, absolutely, and right now in Uptown, one of the issues that we have is that housing has been so popular, that a lot of the tenants that were leasing units, they're either turning them back into single-family homes, and they're becoming more expensive, or the rental rates are so expensive, that the people that work and provide service to Uptown, whether it's a barback, or a bartender, or a server, or an assistant to an attorney, they can't ride their bike to work anymore, they're having to get in a vehicle from Double Churches Road and drive in, and they don't want to do that, the lifestyle they want is to get on a bicycle, ride their bike, or walk to work, and with the rental rates going up, that makes it difficult, and this option could provide a solution for that obstacle. This connectivity, I mean, in a weird way, this kind of, of something for our community, this connects us to Bib City, this connects us, an opportunity to connect to Liberty, to Midtown, with these alternate housing options.
John, today's tiny home workshop was great, thank you so much for inviting me and hosting it, learned a lot, I think you've got a very reasonable plan for adopting this locally, that's already been adopted by the state, and I hope that council will give it their full consideration. It's just another tool, and as a community, we need as many tools as we can to help maximize the experience and value of living in Columbus, Georgia, that our residents and property owners seek, so, thank you for your progressive leadership, and we'll support you any way I can with this tiny home initiative, thank you, John.
Yeah, so as far as what I learned today in the class, I thought it was an excellent class, I actually got a lot more than I anticipated coming into it, I liked it that there were multiple layers to it, we got some of the, you know, the background to the tiny homes, you know, what people thought of it, understanding different pocket communities, and layouts, and different ideas for how to utilize tiny homes, as opposed to just being single-family residents, you know, residences, so you have people that are doing entire communities, I liked seeing some of the things that have been done in other areas, but then also, I mean, they went deep into it, I think John put on a great class here, I've been really impressed, I've, you know, don't know him very well yet, but I like seeing what he's doing, I think he's doing a great job. I couldn't be happier with what I learned today, I hope they do a lot more of this, I think it's very, very beneficial, especially helping people that want to get involved in their community, get involved in their city, and understand what it is the city is doing.
All right, so, like I said, I knew, just due to time constraints, I wasn't sure when we're going to be here, so, I wanted to make sure I got those testimonials on video to be able to share with you, because I didn't know the, the individuals there would be able to come, but we had a tiny house on site, it's probably about a hundred fifty, two hundred square feet, by Mr. Douglas, and he's looking at potentially using it for veterans, Pat Frey, which was here previously, we're looking at some options to possibly use them for some of the homeless issues that we're dealing with, so, it was very good to get different kind of opinions, like I said, we had sixty probably before lunch, and I guess the, you know, with storm coming in, people were trying to kind of get out, but we had at least thirty people here, kind of for our second half where we did the workshop, so that's kind of the spread of who we had, we have government officials, we had contractors, architects, and designers, we had people in financial, real estate companies, corporates, and other, which is people who were just interested or fire department, other different trades, just to kind of get their opinion, so we kind of polled the audience, so all of these are from the actual audience that we had that afternoon. So, generally, kind of once they heard about the tiny houses, and was talking about them, we had, you know, out of the group there, we had probably four, and I asked the questions of the ones that were two, that were no, and the ones that were kind of meh, like, just, you know, kind of in the middle, and they were more like, they felt like four hundred was too small, and they felt like maybe if it was a thousand square feet or less, that they would be more interested in them, especially architects and designers, because they were like, it's just, we're not quite sure if it's to that point yet, we had a few people no, they just said, I, you know, people just said, hey, they're glorified trailers, you know, so, you, we had all the different ranges, I don't want to think that it was just like overly positive, we did have some people that, you know, I just don't think that's, you know, people live in that way, but that's on them, but we did have an overwhelming majority that was pretty, pretty positive for it, we also asked them as a single-family residence, because ideally, adopting Appendix Q, I think when I came before, I kind of muddied the water with accessory dwellings, and, and just greenfield site, just being able to build on a single lot, so, I'm kind of wanting to separate those for just as a single-family residence, or potentially as a multifamily residence, if it's zoned as such. The accessory dwelling, that's more into planning and zoning, and we're going to have to do a lot more work on that end, because density in neighborhoods and things like that will, there's going to be issues there, so, I'm kind of not, this is just kind of for single-family residents, if it's zoned that, or for multifamily, if it's zoned for that, so I'm not trying to do accessory uses at this time. But they were overwhelmingly for it, they were like, yes, accessory dwellings, they were interested in it, but as we talked through the workshop, like I said, there's some other hurdles there to get us to that finish line, so, I'm not ready, I'm not ready to move to that one yet, just right now with single-family residence as an option, and multifamily, if it's zoned, and so, like I said, from the group there, all of the above, they asked me which way did they want me to proceed, and they said all of the above, but what I'm really bringing to you all today is just the appendix for the, the single family. So, once again, that's the intent, it's just to bring forward just the Appendix S, which is what's here, like I said, just like we adopted the, the appendix for the property maintenance code, just for me to adopt that code, so that is an option, and then once it'll provide tiny homes to be built on lots, as a primary structure, on multifamily lots, if it's in approved zone, if it's already a multifamily, they showed us a few pictures, actually, and you see some in here, the one from the Charlotte Observer is one of those, it's doing what's called a micro loft, and so, from the outside, it won't look like a tiny home, but it's a multifamily use, and it may have eight units on it, but it may be combined in such a way where it looks like a regular house, or it may look like a duplex, or it may look like something that you're normally used to seeing, is, but the square footage sizes is a lot smaller, so, and then that last bullet is, tiny homes and accessory dwelling units will require more research, and require approval from PAC, and going through all of that, so, so the next step, ideally, if I, if I got positive feedback from you all, would be to come back at the next council meeting with the first reading of, of Appendix S on its own, so, any questions?
Yeah, we've got Counselor Davis.
Director Hudgens, I'm certainly somewhat a fan of tiny homes, and, you know, certainly intrigued by what I see and what I hear, but there are some things that, and I guess you're looking for feedback right now, as you're still work through this, I still, you know, there's some questions that come to my mind, I think, that, that need to be put out on the table, when you look at supply on the market, I know that our community has a lot of rental supply on the market, and, you know, I'd really like to try to understand that, and how there, would there be an impact, would there be effect, would there be a competitive aspect, I mean, how is that going to, you know, play out in our community, all of a sudden, are we going to have an excess of, of rentals on the market, because we're going in a different direction? I don't know, but I do ask that question. One thing that comes to my mind is, a lot of people talk about tiny homes, but they, they talk about some of the issues that we've had in the past, you know, there's terms that people use for- you know, there's terms that people use for some of these smaller homes out there that just kind of have turned into matters where you got slum lords involved or other kind of things like that. Uh, and, and even, you know, we're all starting to see this aspect of Airbnb and those kind of, uh, outlets that, you know, you have to ask yourself the question, are these going to turn into units that people are just going to rent by the day? I don't know. Uh, but certainly, there, there are questions. Uh, I would think, personally, I would think that there needs to be design standards, like, design standards if you're going to do this, if you're going to start with it, uh, instead of anything goes. Um, I would also think that there needs to be, if you're going to do it, that, uh, there, there, I, I think there would be conflict, or it would maybe possibly harm our community if there's a bunch of individual ones all over, and small, you find a small space and you just throw one out there. I think it would have an effect on property values. You'd have to ask that question. It could harm our community. So, I asked the question, do, does this need to be something that's in a, uh, a community, or a, a subdivision, so to speak, for lack of a better term, of tiny homes, where you have a, you know, a designated zoned area, uh, so it's somewhat controlled, I guess, would be, would be, and protective of our community and still establishing and, and, uh, keeping quality of life at the forefront front for many people, because, um, you know, those are questions that I hear. Are these things just going to start popping up everywhere and anywhere? Can anybody do them anywhere? I would think you might start having some problems if you were to do that, and, especially if you're not utilizing design standards, et cetera.
Correct. Um, we have looked into, I'm going to try to paraphrase what you said. I'm trying to go back, but we've, um, the design standards, like I said, if they were in a historic district, they would have to meet all historic, because it would be in a historic zone. So they would have to meet all the requirements of historic district, design standards, the look, all of that would have to meet those requirements. So, um, I know sometimes we get into issues with fair housing, so that's why a lot of times I don't, you know, necessarily regulate into a certain zone, but we may be able to put some other things, um, in place on that. Um, that's why I stayed away from the accessory dwellings, because I figured that would be the line, like you said, for Airbnbs and those kind of things. Ideally, a tiny house, even though the size is smaller, ideally, you end up paying, your cost per square footage is a lot higher. So ideally, in a tiny house, you're paying up to two hundred, three hundreds per, uh, uh, per square foot, because you're having to use specialty equipment, or different types of ovens and toilets and things that spin into smaller spaces, that you wouldn't normally put in a normal house, because you just don't have the space. So, ideally, just because it's smaller, we try to take that, that, um, negative connotation that it's built bad, or built of less quality. So ideally, I don't think we'd have that concern outright. Like I said, we've had, I've had several, even at this meeting, the last individual that talked, he's got two properties where he's interested in doing it, kind of how you mentioned, like, it's a, it's zoned multifamily, and he wants to put like four or five of them on the same lot. He's not just trying to squeeze it in between two houses and it'll look different. We did hear that from a few architects, and they were concerned about the, the view of the neighborhood and all that is. So, like I said, we're, we're taking that all into account. I don't want to say that I'm getting sixty calls a day on this stuff. I've literally had two that have asked me specifically about it, and they're interested in it. Um, and like I said, Pat Frey has mentioned to it about it too, in some areas that we think that could help homeless, kind of on that scale, is, you know, you've got something over your head, and you're protected, and you're not, you know, just out on the street. So, we're trying to get all that, and like I said, that's why I'm coming for the feedback. But I'll look into the rental effects.
And I, and I'd like to ask one more question. Is there any way to, I guess, once you pass an ordinance, it's done. It's, uh, you know, it's fair and equal for all, but is there any way to ease into this? Is there any way to ease into it and kind of experiment with it, to see how it plays out, if it's something that will really, you know, work in our community? I'm going to throw that question out there.
I have to defer to the city attorney, because I don't know how you, because it's housing, and I mean, if you say it can be in one zone and not another, or only in the historic district, or only on this side of town, I don't, I, I don't really have a good answer to that one.
Can you, is a situation where you can issue X amount of permits under certain requirements?
I don't know.
We, we can certainly, um, you know, have, uh, more conversation, and, um, I, I certainly think, um, to Director Hudgens, and, um, I, um, I, I support the idea, uh, but I don't know that I want to bring it back at the next meeting. Um, I think there are more questions to answer, and, and certainly, I, I'd like to solicit your questions and get those questions answered. Because I think it's going to be a situation where, um, perhaps people are not paying attention right now, and then it's going to be not in my backyard, or not next door to me, and my three hundred thousand dollar house is what I see. And so I, I'd rather, um, move a little bit slower with this, because I, yeah, I, I can, I can just see that. And I heard you mention the historic district, uh, and what they would have to do, but, but I, I think we, we need to answer some more questions and do some more studying before we bring it back, so. And I would, I would agree with you. I think as long as we keep working through it. The other question that comes to my mind is stormwater, stormwater runoff, things of that nature. I know in some of these other communities I see around the country, they don't really have, uh, curb and gutter, asphalt roads, concrete drives. They do it a little more natural. So, well, that's another thing that, that needs to be discussed. So, but if, if members of council have questions, or faults, or concerns, I'd ask that you either share them verbally with us, you know, off air, send an email or something, because I, I, I know that if, if we had this today, and, and, and someone owns property in various neighborhoods, you know, no matter what the zoning is, and this is authorized, and you go out and, and in two weeks, you've got a tiny home being pulled up, and, and, you know, you, you're going to have a problem. So, let us just work on it a little bit more, think about it, and answer questions, and make sure the community is watching, and, you know, I just don't want, I, I just want to go slow.
Yep, okay. All right, that's good. Uh, we've got Councilor Woodson.
Well, City Manager, thank you so much. I want to go slow too, because when you mentioned the historic district, I'm pretty sure my phone is going to be ringing like crazy. But, um, what I wanted to ask, John, was this taped, the conference itself, that meeting, was it taped through CCG?
No, the workshop, the workshop part, it was kind of the catch-22. If we publicized it, then no one would come. So, we wanted people in the room to be able to ask questions. So, ideally, the second half is still on, um, the Inspections and Codes, um, Facebook page is actually a live stream. It's probably about forty-five minutes, where we actually talk specifically about all of these items and things that, uh, Councilor Davis has brought up about ownership and rental properties and all that. And that's still online, and that is, uh, probably about forty-five minutes. And I went through about how would we put it into the city? So, how would it work here? Because, you know, they were looking at it the kind of thirty thousand foot view, tiny house is great, and I was like, okay, well now how would we proceed to implement it as something here in the city? So, that part is still available online.
Can you say where it's located? Because I know myself, I'm going to go look for it, and I'm pretty sure many people listening today, as the City Manager mentioned, are going to be more curious on the presentation today, the video, other things. Is there like a, a place, or do you plan, um, as we're all being educated and considering this, is it a possibility, or do you plan on having another workshop where it could be publicized a little bit more, so that more people that have concerns or interest can attend?
Uh, we, we can look at having another workshop. Like I said, the only concern is that, I had the workshop, and it was on the thirteenth, which happened to be when Hurricane Michael was coming through.
Yeah.
So, I know the people that were intending on coming didn't come, and they sent me, you know, messages saying, hey, I can't be there. And I was like, the speaker themselves came down, and we had to pay them. So, ideally, if they come again, I'd have to pay them again, so.
So, the speakers, there's a cost to it.
Well, I'm not necessarily looking for another workshop, but just community meetings, and you can share what you have, and, and receive input from citizens.
Well, that's fine. I'm just saying that, like Gary and I were talking, you know, would have loved to have been there to get more ideas, to get a feel. We would like to know where there's locations where you can actually go look at it, because sometimes talking and seeing it on a paper is not the same as, you know, reality. So that's why I was just asking, is there other opportunities?
Well, I, I think, yeah, and I hear you, but I, I think I would like to have community meetings, and we can have them, we can have a number of community meetings. For example, if, if we had a community meeting in eight different council districts, and if we had the little devices that we've used before, and we do a survey while we're there after we present, um, you know, and with a series of questions, would you want to have, would this be acceptable?
Yeah, it is.
Next door, in your neighborhood, in your subdivision, and get some feedback?
Well, that's what I, I wanted to go towards that gear. We need to do something to have the public involved, because I'm pretty sure after watching this, there are lots of questions, a lot of concern, and people didn't have an opportunity, thanks to Michael or whatever reason. So, going out into the community is perfectly fine. I mean, I didn't mean bring that same guest speaker in. I mean, just someone that has a little bit more experience, a couple more videos, something that can help us get a better understanding and be able to picture what it would look like in your neighborhood, if it was to happen.
And I think tiny homes can be nicely done, but the, the big question is...
Whose backyard?
Um, is it okay in your subdivision, in your next door? And so, and, but even, and, I mean, we could set standards, you could, but, I, I mean, it's, I, I think about what we're dealing with with small sales, the reaction you got from that, and, and tiny homes, when we were on the intercity visit, I mean, those are, I mean, as he said, they can bring them that, put them on the truck and bring them down the road from Atlanta, back it up in your neighborhood next door, and, you know, pour foundation, and, and it's done in two weeks. And so, but, but it will look nice, but even though, I mean, we got to get a feel, and I don't have the feel yet, from what the reaction will be from the community, we just don't want, you know, we want to make sure that we do it right. So, with that, any final questions of?
It doesn't look like it, no.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And so, uh, we have Veterans Homelessness Update. Um, Pat Frey had to go, and so we're going to add that on, um, a future agenda, maybe at the next meeting, we'll add it. And then, we've got the Status of the Save a Pet Program. Council Walker Garrett is the one who asked for this.
Yeah, I would think, I mean, this is of great concern to him and his constituents. I would think that, I, I mean, I hate to skip it, because I know Pat's ready to go, but he's the one who called for it. He wrote an email that's a mile long.
And so I was going to say, being that he asked for it, and he's not here, we could delay it unless you don't want to delay it.
I don't know if anybody else?
Second.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we'll delay that and bring it back at a time when he's going to be here. And with that done, um, that, um, that concludes my agenda, Madam Mayor.
Okay, great. Um, we do have a request for an executive session on a quick matter of potential litigation. Don't expect this to take long, but I entertain a motion for an executive session. Okay, we've got a motion in second. Um, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
All right, if you would, please, uh, clear the chambers. All right, we are back out of executive session on matters of potential litigation. No votes were taken. We do have a couple of items. We have the approval of minutes from October twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen council meeting. Um, we've distributed those. Uh, we've not heard of any edits or corrections. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Sir?
All right, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
All right, the minutes are approved. Councilor Barnes has a couple of announcements.
Yes, I'd like to mention that, um, on Friday, November ninth, at six o'clock at the St. Luke Ministry Center, is the Third Annual Chattahoochee Valley Veterans Banquet. And following that, on November the tenth, is the Tenth Annual Veterans Day Parade. I can't believe it's been ten years. And we're going to have a change. We're going to have entertainment at eight-thirty. The Reverend Dr. Marcus Gibson and the Greater Shady Grove Missionary Baptist Church are going to be singing, as well as artist and songstress Maria Riddell. So, we're going to have entertainment from eight-thirty until, um, nine fifteen. At nine fifteen, the VIPs, uh, will, uh, speak, and then the, the parade will start exactly sharp at ten o'clock. And so, come out and support our veterans for, on the ninth, at six PM, at the St. Luke Ministry Center. It's the Third Annual Chattahoochee Valley Veterans Banquet. You will love it. I mean, it's a, and it's going to be, the guest speaker is going to be the forty-fourth Surgeon General of the United States Army. That is a coup to get her here. And so, that's my announcements.
Great, thank you. All right, we've got Councilor Thomas.
And to go along with that, on, uh, Sunday, the eleventh, the National Infantry Museum is having a special, um, obs, uh, that morning at, I believe they're going to start at ten, um, to, uh, observe Veterans Day, and they are also going to do the, um, traditional armistice recognition that goes on in Europe, uh, on, uh, Armistice Day. So, ten o'clock at the, uh, National Infantry Museum on, um, the parade field.
All right. Uh, with that, it concludes our, um, meeting today. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Uh, we've got a motion second. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Great, we are adjourned. Thank you.